If you could all please rise for the invocation, Pastor Doug Pratt of the First Presbyterian Church will lead us in prayer this morning. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff. Thank you for this privilege of praying for you. Heavenly Father, we have so many things to be grateful for today, to be living in this beautiful part of creation, to be able to be a part of a community and a nation that uphold values, including aspiring to liberty and justice for all. Lord, we have so much to rejoice in, but we have so much work yet to do because problems always arise and there are always things we can do to make life better. I want to pray today for our nation, for our president and our government leaders in difficult and challenging times, both nationally and around the world, but I especially want to pray for our city. And I lift up to you the men and women who have been called to leadership to guide and direct us, that they might be people of wisdom who hear clearly and understand issues, making skillful decisions, guiding us and directing us, and oh, Lord, we pray that they may be directed in their own inner minds and hearts by the highest of values for the good of all. So I pray all of this in the name of the God whom I love and serve. Amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Councilwoman Caramba, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance, through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman O'Flin?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Well, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
And welcome. Thanks for being here. We're going to start our meeting today with public comment on agenda items. Members of the public that would like to speak on agenda items, please come forward at this time.
Mr. Mayor, may I add, for the public's benefit, we have a number of first readings of ordinances today, and there won't be any public comment taken at those, so if anyone's here for any items that are listed as first reading, you may want to come up and speak at this time.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Derek. Good morning, Ben.
Good morning, council members. Ben Hirschenson, I want to address 9A, which has to do with golf course regulations. Some time ago, several of us in the Bonita Springs Golf and Country Club area got together to discuss our concerns regarding area flooding that came about from the 2017 storms. Since then, we've created a steering committee from our area to funnel information to area residents. I serve as chair of that group. Barbara Ogil is vice chair. We recall numerous workshops that were held under the auspices of the city last fall to obtain comments from the public regarding the drafting of regulations for golf course conversions. Thus far, we have two golf courses in Bonita Springs where this becomes an issue. The former golf course, Bonita Springs Golf and Country Club Golf Course off Paradise Road in Carnoustie, and the present Bonita Fairways, which is still a functioning golf course. As time moves on, it is conceivable other golf courses may also be subdivision or development fodder for investors. One can only imagine the difficulty in coming up with regulations that are general in nature for golf course conversions, because each and every potential tract of land with a golf course differs from any other tract of land with a golf course. But here we are with a draft regulations before us, and the tendency to get very specific because of the variety of existing conditions cannot be avoided. Others this morning, I'm sure, will speak to the specifics, but I want to talk in a more general sense. If development is to occur on a golf course, one has to be mindful of the impact on neighboring homes and similar developments, or smaller developments. For example, a planned development will include engineering studies that will calculate a first floor elevation. In our likelihood, such new developments will have an elevation higher than the surrounding homes. That becomes a very critical issue. As that becomes known, of course, people in the area are going to be very concerned about potential flooding. Those from our area of the city, the Golf and Country Club area, have become quite familiar with water lapping at their doors because of lower elevations, and that has to be a major consideration for any developer. This is not an anti-development presentation or commentary, but rather a plea from the residents in the Golf and Country Club area to encourage the city to have a very detailed focus on stormwater management and mitigation should any plans come across the desk of the building department. The city council and staff, we all know, have a responsibility to maintain objectivity and to maintain an open mind as they listen to comments from neighboring residents. We know that any developer of that land has to be mindful of the lower elevations of the surrounding homes in that area. It is one thing to have a number on a piece of paper or an approved stormwater management plan, but as I learned from my own experiences in my own community, what is on paper does not necessarily translate into a real-life phenomenon. No matter what happens with any planned development in the city, the focus has to be stormwater management, and the real impact on neighboring homes and communities cannot be emphasized enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you for sharing your thoughts this morning. Other members of the public? Kathy, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. For the record, Kathy McGrath, just quick comments on the consent agenda. Items D and E. D, of course, is the replacement of the stop signs on Pennsylvania. I think it's an excellent idea. There's always going to be people that'll cruise through it and not stop, and if they're having problems at dark, you know, with drag racing or whatever. And I know up on Shangri-La, I've been on Shangri-La a lot, and the honest people are going to stop. It's going to make a big difference, and it's a real plus. And the other thing, D, Capital Strategies, Carol and Ashley are here, and I just spoke to them personally, and you know, we are so lucky to have them. They are such an asset. You all know, when you go to Tallahassee and you come back, you say, "The appointments were on time, the doors were open." They are super. So thank you. And finally, I wondered if this is part of the new landscaping plan for the city? Look at the size of that guy. Hallucinogenic, maybe? Clever. We're going green. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy.
Hi, my name is Marcy Garcia. Good morning, thank you. My name is Marcy Garcia. I live on Wisconsin Street, and I too am in favor for the stop signs on Pennsylvania. But I'd also like to request that possibly a stop sign could be put on Wisconsin. I live directly in the middle of Bonita Beach Road in Pennsylvania, and people get up to really high speeds on that road, and as you can see, I have two small children. But I am also one of six houses in a row with small children, and I fear that something's going to happen, and then people are going to take action, and I would hate for that to happen. So I've already inquired with different people in the city for speed bumps or something else, and I know, sorry, I know that a sidewalk is in the works, because part of it is already poured on my lawn, but I'd like to get that pushed up, because I think a sidewalk would be really beneficial, just so that when people are walking to get off the road. I've had several people yell really awful things at me and my family when I asked them to slow down, and it's not only inappropriate, but just cruel, like, why does that have to happen? So I appreciate your time, and thank you for being patient with my children.
Absolutely. Congratulations. You got two beautiful children.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward.
Can I hand them over?
Good morning. Hand them over here, and I'll get them to us. Thank you.
My name is Beverly Poncheck, and I'm a resident at Bonita Fairways, so of course, I'm here to talk about the ordinance for the redevelopment of golf courses.
Oh, yeah, the microphone man? There you go.
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Great.
Thank you so much.
There were several things that we met and went over, the proposed things for the ordinance. For instance, a minimum open space of 40 percent. The 40 percent open space is the calculation of 40 percent times the total number of acres in the original planned development. It is not 40 percent of the golf course subsection. In most cases, the golf course acres met the open space requirement in the original plan, and redevelopment should not reduce the original 40 percent plan. And there's another section that says 75 percent of all required open space shall be green or landscaped areas, and we would like to see this increase to 100 percent, because we feel you shouldn't allow paved roadways, parking lots, and garages as open space. It dilutes the 40 percent requirement. Density and compatibility, the number of units per acre is critical. The underlying rule for our PD zone is six units per acre, and at Bonita Fairways, we're currently at eight units per acre excluding the golf course. But recent developers were able to get approved for 32 units per acre and seven units per acre by exploiting existing zoning codes that maybe the language isn't tight enough. And we're concerned about portions of the golf course being redeveloped and subdivided out of the main golf course. The remainder of the portion would not come under the rules that you're proposing and could be abandoned and left to grow fallow. In our case, the main developable acreage is 10 acres out of 75 acres, and if the 10 acres are allowed to be subdivided out, that would leave us with 65 acres of garbage. Otherwise, the ideas of the president of our master association after we had these meetings is included in this handout for you, where he highlights the wordage that he would like to have changed or tightened up, and then in the red is what he is suggesting, as you might consider it. Personally, I'm concerned about loopholes, because of loopholes is why we have all these 100, 205 homes instead of 176, and 72 units instead of 36. So thank you all for hearing me today. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here and sharing your thoughts. Other members of the public, please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning, council and fellow citizens. I've stood here before you and talked about rainwater. Ben did a wonderful job talking about flood mitigation, all of that. I was concerned, also, I live in the Bonita Fairways area, and this morning I was looking at the flood maps, and yes, they are quite accurate, because we did have flooding back in 2017. But I was wondering if you had seen this article that occurred in the Banner recently? They're talking about horse group development, developing 2,700 acres, and that rainwater is going to be towards the Imperial River. That's the plane up there is to... So if that occurs and they start sending their water down to the Imperial River in 2017, we would have had about a half a billion gallons of additional water to contend within the city. So my question to the council is, do you coordinate with these other estero and other areas around here to help mitigate those flooding potential? And that's all.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. If you could leave it right here, that'd be great. Thank you. Good morning, Don.
Don Konsekowski, and a board member of the Bonita Beach Association also. And my comments are on the temporary use ordinance, and I did send an email to everyone, and the Charter, Section 29, requires that ordinances, whether they're repealed or amended, and I'll just read that section, "Any ordinance which repeals or amends an existing ordinance or part of the city code shall set out in full the ordinance, section, or sections to be repealed or amended, and shall indicate matters to be omitted by enclosing it in brackets or by strikeout type, and shall indicate new matters by underscoring or by italics." And that's in our city charter. This ordinance didn't show that, so I had to take what was existing and what was proposed and take each sentence and figure out what was being changed. I'm not going to go through everything that I put in the email, but if you could just consider and review my concerns and hopefully fix some of those things, I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Don. Thanks for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Ogil, and as Ben has said, I'm co-chair of the Steering Committee for our communities. And I also would like to talk about item 9A. I do appreciate the work that the city has done for the golf course conversions, and some of the issues that were brought up have already been discussed with our Steering Committee, and I'm sure they'll be brought up again. One item that I did not see in the ordinance was the effect of the development on the surrounding existing homes. Some of the plans that have been put before the city previously have called for draining of lakes and building roads. These would be right behind existing homes. The people that are in those homes have been told that there's a possibility that their pools could crack, their foundations could crack because of the construction. So I would like to make some comments that maybe you go back and look at something, because right now, there's nothing in the ordinance that says what those homeowners can do to alleviate this, or how to move forward if their homes or pools are destroyed or cracked, who's going to pay for that repair, and whether or not there's going to be verbiage in the ordinances to cover that type of destruction. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Roy Desmond, Bonita Springs Golf and Country Club area. Good morning, Mayor, council people. I am on the Steering Committee, and I've been tasked with talking about the specifics that we would like to see changed in the ordinance. On page two, Section 4.5, there's the word mitigate. We would love to see that changed to prevent negative impacts. On page four, item four, that analysis of the stormwater management runoff should be done by an independent firm, not employees of the developer. Also in that area, it talks about a 30-foot buffer. We had originally hoped there would be a 75-foot buffer. They came up with 50-foot. We would like to see that 50-foot, not allow it to go to 30 feet. At the end of paragraph number four, I'd like to see the wording, "It will be the developer, new homeowners association or associations' responsibility to correct ponding and flooding issues that occur after project completion." I believe Bonita Fair... I think I stole that line from Bonita Fairways, so... On page five, item seven, the 50-foot, 30-foot, the 30-foot buffer with mature landscaping is not enough to mitigate any kind of light noise. It needs to be 50 feet. We discussed that vegetative is not the same thing as vegetated, and that buffers shouldn't necessarily be placed on the inward boundary. Let's have that discussion in the development phase. Don't force them to put the trees landscaping right there. Item nine, again, it talks about 30 feet, and it also talks about a paved trail. Let's don't put any more pavement than we have to, so why not just a mulch trail or something that has a pervious surface? Item, page five and six, item 11, we understand that in our golf course, 40 percent of the land has to be left natural, but we agree with Bonita Fairways, 100 percent of that should be open space to prevent flooding, not pavers, which don't really prevent, which encourage runoff. That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for your thoughts this morning. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, may I just ask that we get copies of the recommendations for these changes to the resolutions and that be distributed to the council?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Jewett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flin?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
You've got a comment?
Yes.
Just a comment, Arlene, on A, which is the river park. We've talked about this before. I just want to make sure it continues to be the similar answer. You can't really get in there with kayaks now without jigging and jacking and all of that, and I'm assuming this work is going to be much more open for people with kayaks.
It is to work to open up, to provide more access as well. So we'll have more further detailed updates at the next meeting. I'll ask for more further information, and we do have a copy of some construction plans as well, but we'll bring some more detailed information to the next meeting.
Thank you. Thanks, Peter.
Great. Counsel, anything else on any of the other items?
I have E, and I'd just like to say to Capital Strategies, everybody's happy with you, from what I hear, but what I heard last year was, "Well, we don't have any good news. Oh, more bad news. Nothing was accomplished." So this year, we want to hear good news and accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Other members of the council? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on to proclamations and presentations, and item A is a stormwater utility update from StanTech Consulting, and this is Green Sheet 1906-171. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is a continuation of the regular updates we've been providing on the Stormwater Utility Project. Additionally, we wanted to remind you that you do have a first reading of an ordinance as well regarding this matter, so it's council's pleasure if you'd like to address the item as the conclusion of the presentation or wait till that item is in your agenda. And with that, I'd ask Tim Hancock to come forward and start your presentation.
Motion to move it up? Sure. Motion to move this up? Sure, you want to make one?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to move up the ordinance after the presentation.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to move this up. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Jewett?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flin?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tim Hancock with StanTech. I'm also joined today by Molly Williams, our technical lead in stormwater and discipline lead for StanTech as well. This will be a pleasingly short presentation. First of all, for those who are not up to speed, real quickly, why are we here? The city of Bonita Springs is facing an aging infrastructure, which is potentially increases in operations and maintenance costs down the road. You have water quality issues, as do all communities in Southwest Florida. The city of Bonita Springs is on a good path, well ahead of some others, and is to be congratulated, but the Imperial River TD, TMDLs are going to continue to be an issue that needs to be addressed. One of the bigger issues we found is that the city does not have really a dedicated funding for capital expenses or matching grants. That's a year-to-year decision that usually comes out of your ad valorem budget. One of the things we stumbled on as we're looking at this is the graphic here that I think really resonates with a lot of folks, and that is that within the city, after we completed computing all of your impervious areas, what we find is that your residential elements consist of about 68 percent of the impervious surface in the city of Bonita Springs. However, when funded through property taxes, they fund 93 percent of the cost of stormwater. This is a traditional inequity we see typically when we look at stormwater utilities. Your city is really no different, but the stormwater utility gives you an opportunity to create a better balance and resolve that inequity. Going forward, your funding options, looking at what you have today, you really are funding from three different, two pots, three categories. Operating expenditures, which come out of your general fund, that would equate to that $883,026 per ERU, capital maintenance, repair, and replacement that is currently funded out of gas taxes. That would equate to $9 per equivalent residential unit. And the potential capital, the one we talked about that is currently not funded, but year to year is an ad valorem decision for you, that would equate to $15 per ERU. Your ordinance has several functions. Once the ordinance is adopted, utility can be funded at any time. Think of it as two separate but parallel paths. You have to have the ordinance in place to have the option to fund it. You can provide matching funds year to year, and what this does is the adoption of the ordinance creates the tool in the toolbox that allows you to address stormwater issues at every level. If you have a neighborhood issue, it can be funded neighborhood-wide. If you have a basin issue or city issue, you have the flexibility, year to year, to allow for you to address more localized issues or citywide issues. What are the next steps? July 17 will be the second reading and public hearing of the ordinance. August 12, public notices will be mailed to all residents and businesses in the city. August 16 would be the effective date of the ordinance, and then on September 4, the funding level, if any, is determined. What that means is you can adopt the ordinance and choose during your budget cycle to determine what level of funding is appropriate, if any. Even if you chose a zero level of funding and determined to leave the ordinance in place for future use, that is an option to you. And that is one of the shortest presentations I've ever made to you.
I'd have liked that.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Greg, did you have something?
No, I did not. I think it's a great opportunity. I think the graphic shows it all, that a majority share of our residential is funding this when, you know, it's an inequity. So, you know, let's share it, share the cost.
I just want to comment on the fact that it gives the opportunity for us to address some neighborhood issues that I think are being uncovered as our staff reviews all the stormwater management facilities that we have citywide. And the ability to differentiate between citywide issues and particular issues, I think, is critical, because many neighborhoods are going to need help. There's no question about it. And having that facility in place is important. And I think that, frankly, that we should go ahead with the facility. We could fight out the details later, and we can just leave it in place as a tool that we could use in the future. So that, I think, I really am in favor, at least doing that minimally. I think we have a lot to talk about yet, so should this go forward, you know, and you're going to have to make a lot more presentations, and they should be longer.
I don't think I've ever heard anyone ask for a longer presentation, but thank you very much.
Counsel, anything else?
I did have one other question, real quick. It's a follow-up. Sorry, Peter.
Okay.
Amy brought it up. When we talk about, you know, different neighborhoods, if they want to do something special, you know, a nice-to-have instead of a have-to-have, that's still possible also with this stormwater. If they want to go above and beyond what the regulations are to, let's say, give themselves some extra protection, they can do that also with this stormwater utility. This is not just for the bare minimum for each individual neighborhood or whatever.
No, so you're correct. They can come to you and say, "We would like to utilize the existing stormwater utility ordinance to fund a water quality project within our neighborhood." We then would take the file that we've already created that shows all of the impervious. We would create a line, if you will, around that area, and you can create a separate element within that that would be assessed a given rate per ERU to accomplish their objectives over time.
All right, thank you.
It's not just water quality, it's water quantity as well.
It is water everything, sir.
Right.
It's what you choose to address, but yes, ultimately, it's quantity, storage, quality. We don't know what projects down the road are going to become available or necessary for the city, and this tool will allow you to address those as well as your current operational needs.
So if we had an area for an acquisition that was desperately needed, and the people in the neighborhood wanted to help with respect to that, this would be a tool with respect to that.
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, I agree with number one and number two, what they've said.
Counsel, anything other comments? Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to item B now, which is an update by Carol Green and Ashley Staisel of Capital Strategies.
Wait, wait, remember we moved that to ordinance?
We're going to move the ordinance. All right, Rooney, take it away. Just get it right the first time. How's that?
An ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, creating Chapter 48, Stormwater Utility to the city, to the Bonita Springs Code, providing for the creation of stormwater utility and collection methods, providing for separability, conflicts, codification, Scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. This is also a public hearing, so we can take public comment on this item.
Okay, any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Please come forward.
Ben Hirschenson again, and I'll even be more brief than Tim. Stormwater utility, 100 percent, go for it, folks, please.
Thank you, Ben. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none? Derek? Anything else?
So moved.
Okay. Okay. Motion to approve and a second? Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselwoman Carr. We're moving to approve.
You're moving to move this to second reading?
Okay. Yes. Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
No.
Councilman Forbes. Counselwoman Karamba. Councilman Jewitt.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, mayor, for moving.
No, absolutely. Now, we're going to move back to item B, and this is an update by Carol and Ashley. So welcome.
Good morning, mayor and council.
That's not, that's not here.
Go ahead.
No, I was going to just. Okay, you go ahead. Obviously, I.
This is, of course, Capital Strategies, Carol Green, Ashley here to provide an update on the last legislative session and begin preparations for next session as well.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm glad to see the mayor does not have toothpicks in his eyes. You had a long day yesterday, didn't you, Mr. Mayor? Anyway, what a great day for you. We appreciate having an opportunity to be with you again, as always. I'm going to start with just a couple of comments, and I know Ashley, who I know you all understand, does all of the reports for you, and she's going to highlight just a few things before we do need to talk about next year. Next year starts in 89 days. So we do need to be able to be ready for that as we go forward. I'd just like to give you a little statistic that I've been playing with lately, and that has to do with bills. And every year, you know, there are a number of bills that were filed. I know Ashley's going to go into the specifics of the numbers. Over 3,000 this year. And, you know, there were a lot of them that didn't pass, too. There traditionally are four types of bills that I see. That's my mindset says there are four types of bills. There are some that are so good that nobody needs to even really talk about them. They're going to pass, and they're going to pass with, you know, zero negative votes. So there's some of those. Number two, there are some that are so bad that they're never going to see the light of day. And there are those. And then you have budget and appropriations bills, you know, and those are a little dicey depending on how much money there is available in any given year. But then you have another set. That's everything in the middle. And some of those are just, you know, really tough decisions that people have to make. And I know Ashley's going to highlight some of those tough decisions that had to be made this year. But that's where your lobbying really comes into play. That's when it's really important to reach out and touch folks about that. In fact, statistics will tell you that to get a bill to die, which is something that we spend a great deal of our time on, almost all of our time on, you have to have an average of nine visits to a legislator to kill a bill. To get a bill passed, you need an average of 27 visits. So just some of those little things. I know that someday you're going to be on Jeopardy, and they're going to ask that question, and now you've got the statistics to back it up. But some of the most effective lobbying that we do is very negative, actually, to Councilwoman Carr's point, and that is to kill bills. Because when it comes to home rule and some of those things, I know Ashley's going to highlight a couple of those, it really is about getting them to kill those bills, because those bills would be very damning to you with their unfunded mandates. With that being said, I know Ashley's going to hit a few highlights, and then we'd like to talk about going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Hello, Ashley.
Hi, I was hoping to be shorter than Tim, but I might have to go a little bit longer on some explanations. We finished session a day late because of the budget, so we actually ended on May 4, which was a Saturday afternoon. And the budget that was passed was $91.1 billion. And this year, there were approximately 3,500 bills filed, and only 17% of those passed. So that does go to speak to Carol's point that we do spend a lot of time killing bills, amending bills, getting them delayed, whatever it takes to get them off the docket. We do spend a ton of time doing that. In fact, we monitored about 200 bills for the city alone, and only 19 of those passed. So if you want to look at that statistic, it's pretty significant. I'll go through some of the bills just briefly that died this year, because they will be back. Some of them, like vacation rentals, I feel like I've been talking about this since the day we inked a contract with you years ago. Because we, that, those specific vacation rental bills about preempting vacation rentals to the state, there was actually a grandfather clause that passed in 2011 that allowed those ordinances to stay in place. And the bills that were moving this year got rid of that grandfather clause, and they will be back. So we'll be fighting that again. Not that it's been a huge problem for Benita, but it can be. I mean, it's a home rule erosion and something that we need to be aware of as we move forward. Another bill that passed that was actually vetoed by the governor, there were several things in the bill, but it was the plastic straw moratorium, and you will hear more about that, because that will come back again. And that provision actually passed in a House bill that had seven preemptions to the state in it that Representative Roach did, and we are meeting with him about some of these preemptions. But that bill actually, his bill passed the House, but it failed in the Senate. His plastic straw moratorium language got put on another bill that passed both chambers that got vetoed by the governor. And the governor's view was, and local governments, if people feel that they do not want these straw, plastic straw moratoriums, then they need to vote for people in their local districts that have the same viewpoint as they do. And that was in his veto letter. So just be aware that that is coming back next year. And the governor does have the budget, and he has until June 29 to act on it. I don't think he'll take that long. I mean, they've been looking at the budget since the very beginning. I mean, they know what's in there. So that should be coming, I would think, sooner rather than later. And I do want to thank everyone that has come to Tallahassee who we've met with personally, because I know it is not easy to get there. I know we've talked about this before, about getting more of you up there, and I know you go when you can, because it's not easy. And I just want to say, from our perspective, it does mean something to have you there and in their faces. And I know we talked to Councilmember Karamba about this last week for about an hour, about building those relationships with our local legislators, and we are working on a plan, and I believe, are we talking about that today? Because I do feel that that's vital. I mean, Carol and I, we do a good job. I'll pat ourselves on the back. I have to say, we get up there, we're around, we're in town, we see them all the time. But for you to see them, it makes a difference, and I'm hopeful that we can get that plan in place and nail down and move forward on that. So, just to add that. So I'm going to go through, just, I'm hitting highlights, because I know you all read my 47-page reports, word for word, and I know you're very versed in this, but I do want to talk about a couple of bills that passed. One of them was, it's a vegetable garden bill that has been around, I want to say three years, I want to say this was the third year. And it basically preempts all ordinances, anything to do with vegetable gardens, to the state. So any regulation that's in effect now would be null and void. And that actually happened. That was Senator Bradley, he's the appropriations chair in the Senate. That was his bill. And I knew when he filed it this year, it was going to pass, because it almost did last year, and it just missed the mark, and I knew as the appropriations chair it was going to pass. So we really didn't spend a lot of time on it, because there comes a time where you have, do I fight this bill that the appropriations chair in the Senate is doing, that we know is going to pass? Or do we kind of drop that off and work on other things? And we kind of stayed away from that bill, because we didn't want to get on his radar for his baby, because apparently there was someone in his district that had a garden in their front yard, and the city passed an ordinance that it was too close to the sidewalk, so they had to get rid of their 20-year garden. That's why the bill was filed. So we kind of stayed away from that. Cities can regulate watering during drought conditions, fertilizer use, which is always a big deal, and invasive species, but other than that, it's preempted. The other bill that I know you guys followed was the sanctuary city bill, and that was extremely controversial. I mean, there were protesters there all the time. I mean, it was crazy. But that bill basically preempts anything dealing with law enforcement, sanctuary cities is a no-go. In fact, anything that is currently in law dealing with sanctuary cities is repealed. And that was actually one of the first bills, I believe, the governor signed into law, and it was highly controversial. So that pass is a big deal. The other bill that we did work on and deal with was the attorney's fees. And that actually, this bill changes usually in the prevailing part, both parties are responsible for their attorney's fees, but this allows the winning party that sues over an ordinance that's currently in place that is expressly preempted to the state, they get their attorney's fees paid by local government, except for there was an escape clause that's been added. And that escape clause is, if the local government has a proposed ordinance that was the part of the case, they have 30 days to get rid of that. If it's an adopted ordinance, they have 30 days to notice that they're going to get rid of that, and then 30 days after that to actually repeal. That was also an extremely controversial bill that was, that passed this year. The other bill that passed, oh, I'll come back to that. The other one was the tree trimming bill. And that, I believe, was brought out from the hurricanes and having people not get permits. Again, this might not be a problem for Benita, but it was across the state, because I heard a lot of testimony about this. Is not being able to get an ordinance, not being able to get an application permit to remove trees that were fallen, broken on their property. And so essentially, the state said that local governments, if they have, if the property owner has an arborist or a landscape architect that says these trees need to be removed, they don't have to apply for a permit application, they can just remove the tree. And they also do not have to replace the tree, which was a big deal. That was brought up a lot, and they exempted mangroves, but that's neither here nor there. The last bill that was highly controversial, that we like to call the AT&amp;T bill, was the bill that removed many of the provisions of the Wireless Department Act of 2017. That was the boxes for the 4G.
5G.
5G, that's right, sorry. Not technologically savvy, apparently. But the bill removes all the language that stated that a new utility pole in the right-of-way that supports these small facilities, the language in 2017 in that act, it said that they had to, the permits, they had to consider height, they had considered permit review timeframes, they actually had to consider the look of the pole, and now that's all pretty much gone. It actually prohibits the local government from requiring a permit applicator to provide inventories, maps, and locations of the communication facilities in the right-of-way unless it's necessary to avoid interference with existing facilities. So that was quite a battle that went on, that passed. And then...
And the League has filed a lawsuit.
Oh, that's right, the League has filed a lawsuit on that bill. I forgot about that. And then finally, the bills that did not pass that are coming back, fracking will come back again. The bills to ban fracking, that will be back. There was a local government business tax to cap local government business, or local business taxes at $25 per taxpayer. There was also, like I said, the vacation rentals. The last one was the Roach bill, and I just have to go through the seven, it was really seven preemptions. So it restricted a municipality's ability to annex properties in another municipality to levy taxes on nicotine products, to establish a minimum age for the purchase of nicotine products, to regulate single-use plastic straws and sunscreen, to regulate generators at gas stations, and to regulate assisted living facility generators and air conditioning settings. And that did pass the House, but did not pass the Senate. So we'll be dealing with that next year. So we'll be talking to him about that. And that's it, unless anyone has questions.
Counsel?
I know it was riveting information. Thank you.
I can attest to the fact that some of those were very controversial, and we did have a lot of, a lot of people that were very vocal, especially sanctuary cities. I personally got stuck in Senator Gruder's office one day for quite a while, actually, before we could get the sergeant of arms there, because people were so irate at the fact that he was sponsoring that bill. So I personally got to have that opportunity to sit there and watch that. And we certainly understand what was going on. But to Senator Gruder's character, he stood there and took every question from every person that came in there. And I really, I've known Joe a long time, I'm very proud to call him a friend. I was very, very impressed that he did that, even though it was very tense. I mean, tense enough that we had to have the sergeant of arms in the room. So, yeah, there was a little controversy going around this year. But again, we're very pleased and honored to have you as our partners as we go forward. I was...
Carol, can I just ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Ashley's presentation or a statement and a question, which is, I thought the governor's veto on that preemption bill, I guess it was the straw bill, was pretty telling, because what he basically said was, there's no state interest. And I'm hoping that that's a message sent to the legislature, which is, guys and girls, don't waste your time next year coming up with all these rinky-dink things that really don't have a state interest. Frankly, I'd rather, if they're going to stop preempting, I'd rather have them preempt things like changes in mining laws, all right, rather than worrying about vegetable gardens and straws. And I guess my last point is, I agree with the governor, if you will, that, you know, if you have a local government that's going to adopt some wacky thing that somebody considers wacky, the answer is to vote them out of office, not to do one-stop shopping up in Tallahassee. So.
I know that, and totally agree with you, obviously. We agree with you completely. I mean, Representative Roach, who we've known for many years, too, from this area, good guy, you know, he's freshman, he's going to be our senior member next year. So, you know, we certainly have continued to cultivate, if you will, speaking of gardens, cultivate a relationship there. I think many of you have relationships with him, too. And I did speak with him in regards to that preemption. Obviously, as he would comment to me, and he did, he said, well, there is another side. And I said, yes, I understand that. But our big side was, you know, home rule. And really, we fall back on home rule when it comes to any of those types of things. And I think that that's the one message that we have to continue to send to him.
And his bill became a choo-choo train by senior people in the Senate, too, that wanted to...
Yeah, totally.
So, I mean, but he definitely, he was carrying the torch for the straw.
And he was a freshman, I mean...
My comments are not directed toward him.
No, 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 no.
I know, I know, I'm saying we're talking to him next year.
We...
What do you mean, there's two sides to every story? That's partly what he means.
We understand that, and we're all friends, you know, and I understood what he was explaining to me, too. We would tell you that we are very honored to represent and be partners with you. I was, when, Representative, excuse me, yes, Representative Karamba, when we were meeting, when we were meeting last week with the councilwoman, we had an opportunity to talk for quite a while, which we did appreciate all of the time that was spent there, and was able to share with her that I actually did the legislation to create the referendum for the city of Benita Springs, so I always laughingly say I'm the mother of Benita Springs. So I continue to have that wonderful relationship with you all, and we certainly, Ashley and I both really appreciate that. So we are here to answer questions, but we're here also to turn the page and start talking about next year, too. I just want to thank you for the time that you spent with me last week, and I look forward to your helping us as a council to be more effective in our activism. And, you know, we have a lot more conversations to do, so I want to first thank you for that. And I also want to mention that, just in our budget meeting yesterday, I asked that the $750,000 that we had hoped to get from the state legislature in this fiscal year, I asked them to move it forward. So we're very optimistic about how productive you're going to be in this next operation. And that was an outgrowth of our conversation, where you thought you had some confidence about the ability to at least work on that. And even though I agree with you that the kinds of things you spoke about today are probably, in the long run, much more important than, we want to help with this particular project, but these other things you're working on are very effective and very important to us. And I just, a question about the trees. Did the trees pass, or it didn't pass?
No, it didn't.
Was it, it wasn't signed? I don't, I don't know that it's been signed yet, because he's got a lot of bills waiting. waiting.
It actually, as of Monday, I'll have to double check. It hadn't even been presented to him.
Okay. Well, I'm curious about that because it's an astounding bill to me.
I'll keep you.
Okay. Thank you.
There, there, there's a backlog of a lot of bills that have been presented, some that haven't been presented yet, actually. So, you know...
Another forty-eight-page report from you telling us which ones were signed and not signed, right? Okay, good. Good.
Greg?
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments or questions. Um, and I think you're going to touch on it, Carol. You made some comment about what we're going to do next year. And two comments, in Ashley's report and kind of what you said. You were the mother of Benita Springs. You, you, um, helped the legislation go through. You believed in it. Senator Bradley with his garden bill, believed in it. What my question is, how do we get somebody, to use the pun, carry the water for us, to believe in it? You know, like you said, you didn't want to ding Bradley's bill because it was so, he loved it. He was a prosperation, you know? And not to dredge up last year, but here we had, at one point, Ray Rodriguez, um, you know, the year before that with Matt Caldwell. Both those guys were in senior leadership positions, and we still failed. So, eh, eh, kind of going back what you started with is cultivating those relationships now and trying to get those local legislators to believe in what we believe in down here in Benita. How, help us, help them to believe in what we believe in.
Right. And, and you and I have had that conversation offline, too, and certainly had that conversation with many of you. And, and to that point, um, you know, it's very important for us to cultivate those relationships. I will tell you that I believe, number one, after today, um, when we start setting our platform, that, that I'm going to reach out and ask, um, Representative Leader Rodriguez to come and visit with us here, to have an opportunity to have a little dialogue for us to be able to share with him some of our, you know, legislative platform as we go forward. Give him an opportunity before us to, to kind of give us his view of, of what's going on. We'll do the same with, uh, Leader Pascodomo. Uh, Leader Pascodomo has given me every indication, um, verbally to me directly, this wasn't through a messenger, that, that she will fight very hard to make sure that this happens next year. Um, we have every reason to believe that Representative Rodriguez will do the same. I think it's important for both of them to come. They are, they are our senator and our representative, and we're making that, that reach out to them after, we wanted to wait till today till we had an opportunity to talk a little bit about where we were going with our legislative priorities. So once we've done that today, then I will take that responsibility of reaching out to their offices and work with Arlene and Jane to, to get timeframes for them to come, just to give you a few minutes to have an opportunity. That's another way of reinforcing, um, our relationship with them. We've talked a lot about the fact that there are opportunities, and there will continue to be opportunities where we can do that through chamber luncheons, through different, um, obviously, they're having different, uh, get-togethers, if you will, to, to be able to get out there and make sure that we actually form closer relationships with each and every one of them, to your point. And that is, and sometimes you only get two or three minutes, but you get two or three minutes every month, or every two or three weeks, and all of a sudden, that starts really adding up. So I think those things are very important to do, to bind them closer to the city. The other thing that we talked about is twenty twenty is going to be a very pivotal year for Lee County, um, and certainly for Benita because of the fact that we are going to have a, a change. We're going to have a new representative for our area. And the other thing that's going to happen within the next two to three years is you're going to see redistricting happen. So then everything gets kind of thrown up there to see, uh, what's going to happen. This area has grown, you, I mean, you know this. It's grown so tremendously that we're liable to see additional representation here in this area. I think we need to see that as an opportunity. And that opportunity is to get on board and to be able to cultivate, again, um, uh, new friends, new people who can now really hopefully embrace our city. You know, it'd certainly be nice to see people from our city that want to get involved and, and, and put themselves out there, uh, to be able to be our, our legislators. So, uh, those are things that I would plant as a seed of something that we do need to be looking for.
Based, based on that, Carol, just a follow-up. You know, we know that Senator Pascodomo is our representative. It's the same thing with, with Ray Rodriguez. You know, what about reaching out to Senator Ro, I mean, Roach, Dane Eagle, you know, everybody in the local delegation?
Absolutely.
Call your Ann Lee.
Absolutely. I think that all of those things are very important to do. And we, we certainly do that with meeting with them in Tallahassee. I know you, you know that. Um, I think that it's important, too. Actually, I think it would be nice to have, um, Representative Roach here, only because of the fact that he is going to be our senior member. And I think he would be very, very open to that. Uh, again, many of you know him personally, as do we, uh, have, have for many, many years known him. So I think that that would be something that he would openly do because he, that's just the type of individual that he is. I can tell you that in the past, one of the things that has been a great deal of, of help to us, certainly Representative Eagle has always been a big help as our delegation chair. He's always been very helpful to us in, in getting things accomplished. Representative Caldwell, uh, he carried the water for us many years.
Literally.
Literally, that's right. Literally did that. And so, you know, those are the types of things that I think are important. We do have a whole delegation. I think it's important that the people who represent us, I'm sorry, getting some feedback. The people who do represent us directly would be my first tier. And then I think after that, it is important to include the others because, because we don't have a lot of cities in Lee County. So I think that they all should pay attention to those of us who are incorporated. That's my personal opinion.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Any, anything else, counsel? I, I wanted to ask, Fred, no, go ahead.
All I was going to say is, based on what you saw last year, do you feel that we should encourage BSU partner up with them and do some septic tank conversions?
That, that's, um, I think the septic tank conversion is a very important issue. I believe that there is a lot of, of talk about that in Tallahassee every year, and there has been for every year. Uh, I think that, uh, working with DEP and with this governor and with others, I think that you'll find everybody thinks that's a very important issue. So, um, anything that you can do here locally with BSU and to try and bring that forward, I, I don't believe that anybody would say, no, let's not do anything about that.
Very good. Peter.
Very good presentation.
Fred, go ahead. Finish up. I'm sorry.
Very good presentation.
Thank you.
Peter.
Just to comment on that, um, um, my feeling on that is, um, not that we're not interested in septic tank conversions, but flooding is clear and present danger in Benita Springs. And, um, in terms of honing in on our priorities, I think nothing else, including the septic tank conversion thing, should get in the way in that. So we don't have channel conflict up there about what we're asking for. Now, if there were a separate pot of money that was set aside up there just for septic tank conversion, and it wouldn't present a problem with respect to what needs to be our primary thing, I mean, I think that would be something to think about. But I, it's a matter of prioritization.
It may well be, sir, that what we need to do, though, and when we actually, I know that, I believe you have the list of priorities from last year in your packet, correct?
It was number two.
And we're going to talk, and, right. And, and, and I think that what I'm hearing in between the lines is that if there's an opportunity there, that we need to alert you that if there's an opportunity...
That's my personal, one person's view. Yeah.
You know, and, and I would think, and, you know, I'm just kind of halfway spitballing here, but that's kind of fun sometimes. Uh, when you see all this money that's coming from Washington, when you see this money that has been allocated for the Everglades and water, uh, from Tallahassee, from Washington DC, maybe septic tanks figure into that equation down the road in the future because we can't keep saying, you know, send the water here, send the water there, clean up the water, if we're going to pour septic tanks into the water. So I have to believe at some point it's going to be in the package. And, and I know you'll keep your eyes open for that.
And it is.
I'd like to be part of that package.
It, it is talked about every year. I mean, it, it certainly gets its airing.
The other quick thing on that is, um, I, I would chat it with John Jenkins the other day, and it was very interesting because he showed me the map of what's not on sanitary sewer. And BSU has absolutely done a fabulous job throughout this city. And there are really very limited spots that are not on sanitary sewer. Obviously, the San Carlos, which has big lots and, and has septic, uh, tanks. But, you know, it's basically that area where we had that development two years ago over by Morton, uh, you know, and then there's one other area. But there have been thousands that have been converted. Uh, not to say we wouldn't want a hundred percent done, but I think that needs to be kept in mind. It's not like some other places in the state where there are thousands of septic, uh, tanks. So...
There are some areas in the state that have...
Real.
...major problems, you know? So, yeah, I'm aware of that.
Yeah. I agree that our priority is for flooding. And, uh, we're, I mean, I, I think we should get off the septic tank because I agree that that's a low priority because of our own particular needs within Benita Springs. But areas north and west of us where they have septic tanks, that's where that should be applied because things that happen, as we know, north and, I'm sorry, north and east of us, come down to us eventually. Uh, so as a, as a regional thing, that's important. And again, I wouldn't, um, make it a, a priority for us, but I think that it's the stormwater management, uh, that we really have to focus on.
Thank you. I, Ms., oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, if we, maybe we need to, at this time, turn to Arlene and talk a little bit about priorities. Would that be okay with you, sir?
Sure. No, absolutely. And I was just going to ask, um, real quick, if you could give a sense for the benefit for everybody. Uh, ours obviously didn't pass, but what other types of bills in the area in Lee County did pass?
Well, are you talking specific to bills or specific to appropriate?
I, I would say water. Let's, let's, let's go with water.
Um, I do...
Because I know that's pretty broad. I apologize.
No, that's okay. We, we do have quite a list, but I can also tell you that with that list that we have right now, we're waiting on vetoes to happen. And there were some things from this area that did make it on the list that are on the veto, potential veto list that we're, we're hearing about from Tax Watch, et cetera. So we'll know a little bit more as we go forward. Not really sure at this particular juncture, uh, what we're going to see happen. I can tell you that most of the people who got, um, a, a mention, a line item, if you will, I don't believe any of them really got everything they were asking for. Uh, things got pared back a little bit, but we do have a full report on that. And, um...
We can do it after the vetoes.
Yeah. We can do it after the vetoes. How would that be? After the vetoes, we'll give you the whole list.
Okay.
Then we'll, then we'll, then we'll know, and it'll be accurate.
Yeah.
And that's right around the corner.
Yes. Yeah. They're, they're speculating that'll happen this week.
Okay.
So we'll be glad to do that and support, and supply that to you so you know exactly what happened here in Lee County.
So let me drill down a little bit. And I'm not, I'm not trying to cloud the waters one second. I'm just playing devil's advocate. Uh, we're hearing, yeah, water is the priority, and we're going to go through that. And I wholeheartedly concur. I'm not so sure that we necessarily cloud the waters by, if we want to get into the septic tank. I mean, I, I don't think Fort Myers goes to Tallahassee and asks for one thing, right? I don't think Sanibel goes and asks for one thing. I'm just, I'm playing devil's advocate. I don't think, yes, I want to stay focused. Don't mishear me. But I also don't think we need to, oh my gosh, we only have one ask. We, you know, I don't, I don't want us to get backed into a corner that we haven't received funding in a few years and to get gun shy. So I want to, I want to, I want to balance that in what, in our approach.
I agree with that. I think it is on our list.
Yeah.
I don't think I'm going to say and take it off the list. It's on...
Yeah. No, I, right. Absolutely. I was just...
Yeah. And, and we've only missed funding two years. So, just, just for the record. Um, and, and so, um, I hear what you say.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think you're, I think you're looking for opportu-, uh, again, I think we're looking for opportunity to look and see exactly where that's going to land. And that's one of the things by having our finger on the pulse of what's going on, we'll be able to advise you as we go forward. Uh, it was my understanding, and obviously, this, the council needs to make, take action on this, that, um, the, the project from last year will probably even more well-defined this year because there'll be, there'll be some additional information. So I think that that, that helps us, too, and to be able to carry that forward along with the, the commitments that we have to Councilman DeWitt's point, um, the commitment that we had specific to Leader Pascodomo when, when I had that conversation with her about that, you know? Um, there, there was some surprise there, and that's okay. Surprises happen in the middle of the night in Tallahassee all the time. And, uh, you know, so we'll be able to, uh, have better information or more information this year. So I think that that bodes well as we go forward. And to your point, too, um, there, there are other areas where they ask for more things, but they have spread those out so that it's not the same person making the ask. So there's a little bit of massaging that goes on there, too.
Great. Arlene, or, or counsel, any more questions or thoughts?
We're, we're going to be emailing you out the list as well, but our staff recommendation was that we continue with the Quinn Downstreet project as your number one priority. And Matt is working on some more additional modeling, so we'll have some more information defined there as well. Additionally, we're able to probably account for some more of a match in some additional work that we've been doing through this year. So that was our goal, to bring that back to you, uh, probably to the next meeting with, um, the last year's, uh, longer list of, um, uh, general priorities as well. But to keep that as your number one priority, and we're going to define the dollar amount a little bit more in there as well from progress that Public Works has done. And additionally, you have as a subsidiary to that is when and if opportunities arise for, um, septic tank, that we would, uh, bring those forward. And we continued an open conversation with BSU about that, and they've been looking, I know, at those communities that Deputy Mayor had mentioned.
Peter.
Uh, South Dean is in that as well, right?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, questions or...
We had other things on the list that were general in nature. Uh, we don't have a list that's before us now.
No. We're, we'll email that out to you so you can...
Yeah. Because it said that we, but from my recollection, I, I'm in favor of maintaining the same list with the, uh, priority being pretty much the same as last time.
Um, the other thing that we discussed at our, Carol and I discussed is whether or not counsel would like Carol to send an invitation to both Representative Rodriguez and Pascodomo to, to attend the meeting. So...
Yes, they're getting the nods.
Yep. We're getting nods. Yes. Yes. I, I feel, I feel the love.
Okay. Counsel, anything else? Or ladies, any final thoughts or closing thoughts? Parting thoughts?
We're good. We're, we're ready to go. Eighty-nine, eighty...
Speed round or...
Eighty-nine days. Eighty-nine days. Actually, eighty-eight and a half days. So, uh, yeah.
Is that, it's mid Sept-, what's the date?
September sixteenth, and we'll, we'll get those da, those dates all out, too.
And session starts in January, and it'll end in March.
Right.
Of next year.
It'll be very cold when you come to Tallahassee this year. So just understand, it gets cold in Tallahassee in January and February. Anyway, thank you all so very much. Appreciate, appreciate our continuing partnership with you all and look forward to it. Anytime you have any questions, you know, they know how to get ahold of us, and we're, we're here locals, so we'll come and visit with you. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Okay. Derek, we took care of the moving up of the item. Okay, we're going to go to, um, item eight now?
We have, actually, we have one more item that we, uh...
Okay, I apologize. Is that eight?
That is, item twelve A.
Okay.
Uh, this is a presentation on a, um, resolutions and necessity for Terry Street. Um, we have a couple consultants. We're paying by the hour to sit around, so...
One. I looked at my Roman numerals wrong. Thank you, Derek.
Great. Uh, good morning. Uh, I'm Bob Murray with Home Montez. Uh, I represent the design team of Alta Home Montez, who's been doing the design on the project for West Terry Street Extension, uh, or the pathway project. Um, moving forward here. Uh, you know, I think you're familiar with the, the project corridor. Basically, um, project limits is, uh, on the west end where the four-lane transition to, to the two. And then the current project ends at Pine Street. And actually, some of these slides you've seen before. I'm just going to be utilizing some of them. Uh, sorry about this slide being dark, but primarily I heard today to talk about right-of-way issues. Um, the, the current sidewalk exists along the whole, uh, north side of the project. And the, uh, hm? Okay. Yeah.
That's that darker...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That darker, darker strip amongst the dark, right?
Yeah. Yeah, sorry about that. So basically, the sidewalk exists along the whole north side. And this is, this is me to fairways right in here. Okay? But parallel easements over on this far side, not working too good. Um, so the existing sidewalk, uh, on the north side along me to fairways is actually on private property. And, um, the sidewalk was built back in ninety-eight, ninety-nine by the county. Um, there were discussions early on in the planning process with me to fairways, uh, about easement, which was never formalized. Uh, so the sidewalk basically exists on private property today. Um, to talk about a few of our planning processes, how we ended up where we are today, um, the, uh, during the planning process, the, this corridor of West Terry Street was identified as, um, a high, top priority for the city for their bike and pedestrian way. Um, community feedback was received, there were public meetings. Um, this pathway, um, will connect to a pocket park being designed as part of the project, and, uh, will provide connectivity to the north. Let me change something here. Basically, to the north and to the west, or to the east, back to, um, Old Forty-One. Um, part of the alternatives looked at, uh, about maintaining the sidewalk on the north side had to do with primarily limited right-of-way to the south. Uh, the current right-of-way at a minimum of fifty feet wide. Um, and if we were to potentially move the sidewalk to the south side, just adjacent to me to fairways, we'd be affecting seventeen or eighteen, uh, single-family homes and a few condominium sites. Uh, in doing so, um, it'd be a continual, a considerable time and cost factor, uh, made a lot of dryways to deal with, uh, splint setbacks, and setbacks to structures. So, um, pretty much eliminating the, the opportunity to actually go south because of, of the timing, the cost, and the impacts. The, um, currently, uh, the right-of-way does exist at the west end of the project on, on Highland Woods. And at the east end of the project, uh, further out, the, uh, current sidewalk exists on the, the school site. There's agreement to maintain that. Uh, and that's very important. Uh, safety considerations that were, uh, provided for the project, um, there were major concerns from the public having to do with safety of, of... from the public having to do with safety of, of, uh, bike use and pedestrians. Um, some of the results of, of the feedback was to provide, um, let me move to the next slide here real quick. Whoops, it's not there. I'm gonna hand out a slide. We downloaded, loaded this, it didn't appear like it came through the downloads, I apologize. All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, it's true. Look on the TV screen, gang, if you get, you get a better picture.
You have it there?
We actually can see it, wait.
Okay, cool.
A lot better, yes.
It's like the, like the, like looking down, that's a section, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Apologize. Uh, this basically shows, um, you know, what, what we're providing. On the north side, uh, I planned a twelve-foot-wide, uh, multi-use path. Uh, we're closing in the north side swale for beautification, uh, safety reasons, and in, in doing so, we're providing a closed-range system on the north side of the roadway. Uh, we're still maintaining the, the two, two-lane, two-way traffic, um, but we're also providing two seven-foot-wide buffered bike lanes on north and south side of the, of the roadway. Um, a couple of things we did for safety reasons, we, we've lowered the travel speed on the section of West Terry Street. Uh, we're, we're providing, um, six more-defined raised crosswalks, uh, through the corridor, uh, pretty, pretty much mimicking the crosswalks that are there today, but they're gonna be more defined and kind of a raised, so it has to slow down traffic and more defined for pedestrians to cross. And also, we want to maintain the sidewalk on the north side due to the school at the west, and a lot of, a lot of kids in there during the school hours. Environmental concerns, really, we didn't have any, the project was, uh, pretty much in an, uh, existing upland, uh, man-made swells, uh, system. We currently have our district, uh, exemption permit for the project, we got lucky with that. Um, and in, in maintaining the sidewalk on the north side, uh, and not having to go to the south, we were able to maintain the existing stormwater crossings, some improvements to them, uh, but, but basically, this whole area, uh, outfalls drainage to the south through West Terry Street, then to a series of canals, uh, that goes south, and some of them get pretty close to the right-of-way, so we didn't have to impact any kind of stormwater system to the south side, so really, no environmental impacts or concerns. Uh, super permits are in place to go forward with the project. Now, I'd like to kind of walk you really quickly through, through the project, I divided it into three sections, um, in front of, uh, your fairways, uh, primarily to the west of the entrance. The proposed right-of-way, which I'll show you in a minute, is basically on the north side of the existing sidewalk as proposed. Uh, the current right-of-way is in the middle of the ditch somewhere in there, and I'll show you that in a minute, too. Uh, continuing down, looking to the east, um, uh, we redesigned, uh, some of the sidewalk in this area to lower the elevation and offset some, so we don't impact their, their existing, uh, decorative fencing. There's, uh, on, not east, on the west of the, of the entrance, and on the other side, east side, the same thing, so we're not impacting those, we won't, won't touch them. Um, moving on, same thing, proposed right-of-way is at the back of the existing sidewalk. I hope you can see this, if you look on the, the, uh, left side of the slide, you, you can see in red, uh, the existing, it's labeled existing sidewalk, and we have the proposed right-of-way at the back of the sidewalk, and actually, we're building the new pathway probably about two feet inside the proposed line. And you can see, we need a right-of-way, uh, primarily, uh, to, to, to build the, the project in, in total. The, the red line is existing right-of-way line, and then, um, pretty much along the whole frontage of...
If I can interrupt just one second, the other pointer actually will show up for, it gets recorded, your, your red one won't get recorded.
I'm sorry. Um, yeah, and, and ba-, basically, along the whole frontage of me to fairways, they have a, a, a raised, a, a planted berm buffer. Uh, so, we need a, uh, I think it was a, about ten-foot-wide temporary construction easement, which will be temporary. Um, after construction's done, it'll be, it'll go away. Basically, what we're gonna do is, we'll, we'll meld into our slopes, basically, back into their slopes, so we need that for temporary construction, uh, beyond the proposed right-of-way. Another sample through the same section, uh, very similar comment, where it shows the proposed path, existing right-of-way, proposed right-of-way, existing sidewalk, uh, at the right-of-way, proposed right-of-way line, again, temporary construction easement. And then, at the entrance itself, uh, we have to realign the, the pathway to be pretty much straight through, um, with the ADA requirements for cross-slope of sidewalks, it has to be two percent cross-slope max, usually try to give about percent, percent and a half, and being so, sometimes the challenge getting through driveways, entrances, so we're, we have to regrade portion of this, um, uh, so the pathway meets ADA requirements, so some regrading of the area, we're not gonna probably impact their median per se or their sign, uh, shouldn't be, uh, an issue there. Moving on, east of the, of their entrance, back toward the school, same thing, looking, looking easterly, uh, same condition here, proposed right-of-way at the back of the existing sidewalk, um, I think the existing right-of-way is generally over here, just off of the existing shoulder, uh, in the middle of the swell there. Moving on, same condition here. See the bicyclist using the, the sidewalk, need for the multi-use path. And here, another representative section through here, uh, same condition, basically, with the existing right-of-way fairly close to the north side pavement, um, like I said before, the existing right-of-way is basically fifty feet wide, it's a general rule. The proposed pathway will be about two feet off of the proposed right-of-way line, existing sidewalk is pretty much right on the proposed line, and here again, a temporary construction easement to build the project. That is a quick overview, are there any questions?
Peter?
Move to approve.
There's been a motion to approve in a second, Amy?
Do you clarify what you mean by buffered bike lane, if you're a curving engineer, or is it...
Let me go back. Uh, I'll show you here.
I, I can explain.
Yeah, go ahead. If you see, if you see right here, um, basically, when we say like a seven-foot buffered bike lane, it's basically seven feet from the edge line of the travel lane to the edge of the curb, seven feet, and then it's, it's a double, double stripe, it's like about foot and a half out to out, so they, they call it a buffered bike lane because it's more defined.
I mean, there's no barrier between the bikers and the cars?
No, no, no fiscal barrier, that's correct.
And I think, obviously, you know, safety-wise, you know, at least my, my mind would say that there should be a buffer, there could be a buffer, but then, when you, when you look at it, obviously, it looks horrible.
Right.
But we're here about safety, we're here about practicality.
Right.
And I guess practicality is not splitting the difference and moving, ah, the bike lane on the other side of the sidewalk, and some, I think you know where I'm going, there's no way to create, or is there a way to create a buffer without...
Well, the, the serious bikers wanna be on the pavement, they, they, they wanna be able to move, you know, on...
And, and I'm sorry, I stated that wrong, sir, correct. Is there a way to split the difference, but you have to rip up the whole median, move the median over, to move the bike lane over to create a buffer between the cars and the bikes?
This...
Matt, you wanna...
And I'm probably not saying that right, I apologize.
I mean, the...
Let me, let me...
There's only a finite number of space there to do what you, yeah.
So, what you see here is not what you typically see when you see on-street bike lanes, uh, in southwest Florida. This is a new standard, and it actually adds two feet. Typically, what you see is a five-foot-wide bike lane. When you add that additional stripe, you have seven feet, so, the, the friction factors between the, the vehicles and the biker, um, are dampened because you have more space, and, and this is kind of a, more of a standard. So, to what Bob's point is, that the folks that do ride on, on-road bike really do want a, a dedicated pavement surface, and given the right-of-way constraints, it, it's a fifty-foot right-of-way, uh, in the constrained areas here, um, there, there's really not, we don't have that much space to, to, to create a cycle track, which is what I think you're referring to, Mr. Merritt. There's, there's a lot of utilities in the ground where, really what we're doing is using the existing drainage and enclosing where we can, and so, it, it's a balancing act, and we believe this will meet the needs, and it's kind of the feedback we received from the public workshops that we had last year.
Okay. And I, and... Did you have something? I'm sorry, I thought I caught you. Okay.
To follow up on that, I mean, that, the reason we're making the, the multi-use path at twelve-foot wide, is the multi-use path, you know, so like the recreational cyclists, I think, you know, can use a, a hiker and a jogger, stuff like that, but the serious rider will stay on-road and wanna go, yeah.
Thank, thank you for that.
Sure.
There has been a motion in a second, is there further discussion? Greg?
Yeah, just one question, one, the handout you gave us has got all the different, um, widths and everything, those aren't etched in stone, they can be massaged later on, correct?
Uh, the widths of...
Well, what I'm referring to is, like, in, in the Land Development Code, the, the travel lanes are supposed to be sixteen feet, here's ten, so...
Th- th- this is, like I said, it's a balancing act, and those, those are the lane widths that are, are called out to make this fit within the right-of-way.
Well, but, we're talking safety, I mean, fire truck's almost ten-foot wide itself, so you have a fire truck going down through there.
And you have a buffered bike lane that's seven-foot wide, so, so some of that space is...
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, but, Land Development Code, John, am I correct on that, is sixteen?
Well, the...
City Development Code?
Well, for, for a one-lane, for one, one, one lane, one-way would be sixteen feet for fire access, but, but, uh, standard travel lane for max, higher speed would be twelve feet, and any more, a lot of times, they're going down to eleven. Uh, we've dropped the speed here to thirty mile an hour, and plus, like Matt said, you have your seven-foot wider pavement on the, each side, and, and with, with the raised crosswalks, I think that the intent is to make the whole thing safer, calming the traffic, mixed-use, things like that. So, I mean, is it etched in stone? No, does it affect the project? Probably. You ten-foot is a minimum, uh, but there is plenty of room for emergency vehicles.
Okay.
And I, I just wanna clar-, clarify on, on the motion, this is to approve the three resolutions for necess-, necessity to begin the condemnation process. We have an estimate, based on appraisals, of two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, three-hundred dollars for the acquisition, but that will guarantee that we'll be able to take the other funding that we've received...
Right.
For the actual improvements.
Okay. Been a motion in a second, any further discussion? Roll call, Fred.
Well, I just, on this thing we're talking about, could you put, like, at the boundary of the ten-foot lane and where the seven-foot bike lane starts, periodically put a narrow, but, uh, and periodically put a rumble strip, so that if a car got over there, it would make a bunch of noise, would alert everybody?
Well, some, something that will happen, you don't see it here, but basically, the standards for, uh, pavement marking and raised pavement markers you see on the pavement is, um, there, there will be a, uh, white, white-red, uh, RPM on both lines, so they'll have that, like, I think, I think a twenty-foot, twenty-foot spacing, something like that, so that'll be there, so that'll kind of create that rumble strip effect. Yes.
There's been a motion in a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Jim Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarr?
Aye.
Derek, I'm halfway being sarcastic, halfway not. Anything else in order, or are we, are we good to go forward?
You're good to go forward with the rest of the agenda.
Okay, buddy. I just wanted to double-check. Peter?
Just a quick, uh, question point, which is, um, the details of this will come before us, uh, at some point, too, soon, these discussions, points that are being made.
We, we can bring you a, a project update that, that...
Right, okay.
Shows you what the final design looks like.
Okay, gotcha, thanks.
That sounds great. Okay, I think we're up to item, um, eight A, and this is a letter that I'm gonna read. Uh, there is a county commission meeting going on up in Lee County right now, um, from, and I'm not sure exactly how it works. Generally, their meetings are on Tuesday, but for some reason, reason, these meetings have been on Wednesday. The last meeting, such meeting happened, we moved up the time of our meeting, this one certainly coincided. So, with that in mind, and, uh, for some of those, uh, you know me, I always poke fun at myself, at, at council's April third, twenty nineteen, meeting, and that was the one where I phoned in from the hospital, and there was a little background noise...
Yes, it was.
Because I was having some complications. (laughing) But all this poke fun at me, right, 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 right. But at city council's April third, twenty nineteen, meeting, uh, council member Nick Bados, along with Bill Spakowsky furnished a presentation to city council on the new rules that Lee County was proposing that would allow new lime rock mines to be more easily approved in the county's DRGR adjacent to the Village of Astero. At the April third, two thousand and nineteen, meeting, city council voted unanimously to support the Village of Astero's opposition to the proposed new rules. Attached is the letter dated June fourteenth, twenty nineteen, from myself to the Lee County Board of Commissioners, expressing my opposition to the adoption of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment CPA twenty, twenty eighteen dash one-one-zero-four, that would allow lime rock mines to be more easily approved in the Lee County's DRGR area. The proposed amendments would eliminate MAP fourteen, quote-unquote, which defines the acceptable area for lime rock mining in the DRGR, and my endorsement of Mayor Bill Ribble's June tenth, twenty nineteen, letter to the Lee County Board of Commissioners. Additionally, city council rescheduled their regularly scheduled meeting, as I mentioned, on April seventeenth, which I attended, as did others from the council, so thank you, we had a nice, uh, support there, uh, from the county commission meeting, and I'm just gonna read this quick for the record, to, and this is to the Lee County Board of Commissioners' attention, Brian Hammond, the Honorable Brian Hammond, Vice Chairman. Dear Commissioner Hammond, I would like to express my support of the Village of Astero's concerns relating to the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment CPA twenty eighteen dash one-zero-zero-one-four for lime rock mining, and endorse the letter sent by Mayor Bill Ribble dated June tenth, twenty nineteen. The adoption hearing for the amendments is scheduled before the commission on June nineteenth, twenty nineteen. I regret that I am unable to attend the June nineteenth hearing, as our city council meeting is scheduled for this same time, but strongly believe that if adopted, these amendments will result in Lee County giving up much more of its ability to control the amount and location of lime rock mining in Lee County. This would result in major impacts to our water resources and land uses. I respectfully request that the commission take my concerns into consideration. Sincerely, Peter Simmons, Mayor. And for those that were there, and those, uh, at the last meeting, there was an outpouring of people there, and I do apologize, that's literally right a few days after I got out of the hospital, so I came, spoke, and left with my chauffeur, so, I'm not sure, uh, but I, I can tell the majority of that room, ninety percent or more, was i- in, in agreement with, uh, our opposition to this.
Right.
And, uh, I would like to hear some other thoughts, um, this is, you know, uh, it's, unless things change, uh, last time, it was a three-to-one vote, as you know, and there's a vacancy right now, so it was, uh, a three-to-one vote, uh, against, uh, these wishes, and, uh, we'll see what happens today, but unless something changes, and then ends up in a two-two deadlock or something different, um, you know, we shall see what happens. But, uh, Amy?
I just wanted to mention, I did share a personal letter that I had sent previous to finding out, you were sending this for, uh, on behalf of the council, uh, that reiterated the points that were made, but I also made the point that I thought that some of the issues that were raised by the two-hundred-plus people that attended, including you and other members, as you say, of the council, and I spoke also, uh, that it was, we really needed to delay, we, what the, what, what many people had asked at that meeting was that they delayed their decision, so that we could, in a thorough way, review some of the points that were made. Um, so, in my letter, I mentioned the fact that I thought it was, um, bad policy to remove, uh, amendment, uh, MAP fourteen from the Lee County regulations, because it, uh, tended to concentrate disturbances for mining, um, in one particular area. Um, I did get a re-, and I sent one individually to each of the commissioners, and I did get a response from, um, Commissioner Prendergast, and he basically reiterated, uh, reiterated the position that I think has been articulated in the papers and in the media, that the response from the state agencies validated the position that it would not affect water quality or quantity. I read the, the, the letters from the several agencies, and my view of reading that is that what they were saying, that they, that, that it didn't affect state lands, or federal lands, or we, there wasn't any, uh, specific, um, proposal or project that was being considered that would, that they could really evaluate. So, I didn't read the response from the state agencies in the same way that Lee County did. So anyone that wants to read that, they could refute my reading of that, but that was, and I responded to Commissioner, Commissioner, uh, Prendergast. I said, "I don't agree with your reading." And I quoted the things that he quoted back to me. And I said, "I don't see how you could read this and say that this supports your position." But, you know, I did in, I thought in a respectful way because, you know, there is a difference of how one interprets that. Uh, but that still is my position and, and I'm curious because they're supposed to be voting on it right now, um, whether they...
Keep checking my phone. I haven't seen...
No, nothing's happened. So I, I, I mentioned that I thought that they should just postpone it and let's have a discussion about all these things. And, and, and again, if those of us, we have moved, we've had, uh, comprehensive plan changes that we send forward to the agencies and they respond in a somewhat superficial way. I, I'm sorry, not to criticize another agency. I try not to criticize anybody because God knows they're gonna criticize us. But I don't think it was thorough in that way. And, and I do think it's, that the points that were made by not only Astero, but so many people all over, were that it is important that now if they pass this, then anytime there's any kind of a project, we have to get involved with it, you know? And I don't think we have time to do this, you know? We don't have the facility to analyze it that way. So it, it has been, and I also asked for the Lee County, uh, to review their, their stance on the DRGR. It's either important or it's not. There were studies that were done, what, ten, fifteen years ago? So once and for all, let's understand what, what that means. Uh, does it mean density reduction? I- is that important? That's what it says. So if it isn't, then we need to review that. And I'm, and I feel that we have not addressed that in a way that I thought was the intent of the original, um, institution of the DRGR. It's not just Lee County. Collier County's doing the same thing. So let's, let's have a discussion there. That's what I, I asked for. So whether I'll get a response or not, I don't know.
No, Amy, I like that. And you said, but just to carry that, your thought, you know, the dense, is it about density reduction?
Of course it is.
Right? But is it also about groundwater recharge?
Yeah.
Or is, yeah, right? Or is it about building houses where there was four feet of water for a month?
Well, let's, let's talk about the regional, this is why we have regional government.
So this is violent agreement, Amy, is what this is?
No, I mean, I...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we're gonna go around the horn.
I would think, I, and this is one of the things that I talked to Carol and Ashley about is I said, I really, my personal feeling is that where we have to do the activism is very close to us. It's in Lee County. And this is one of the things that I'd like to engage and I hope that they respond to us. But anyway, I just wanted to share with that. I put it personally. So if they come back and they are mad at Benita Council, you can say it was my fault.
That's fine. Thank you, Amy. And Greg?
I'm good.
Okay. Laura?
Pete?
Well, Fred had something.
Okay. Fred?
No, I, I think that the, um, presentation, really, there was a great idea that was put forth by Bill Ribble, and I expanded on it, and that really is what it's all about. And that was, he proposed that we go to Florida Gulf Coast University. That'd be Lee County. Let them put the, uh, comp plan amendment aside, let them go in and redo the study. Then when it was my turn, and I, I didn't know he was gonna do this, I said, "No, what we wanna do is let them do it, but bring in Waldrop, the county, people that did the study for the gravel mining. Bring in Greg Stewart that did a study for Astero. Bring in Stokowski that was superior review. Have them all work together to get this sorted out. And while you're at it, you wanna have the land planning part of Florida Gulf Coast look at the land use plan and all that. And that big thing is that you have these studies with big, huge differences of when you run out of gravel. We're not in any imminent danger of running out of gravel in the next ten or twenty years anyway. So there's no need to do this in a hurry. Just park it and get this thing sorted out and empower Florida Gulf Coast University. Let the governor do it if necessary, but let them get it done. But, and I honestly thought we would end up with a two-two. One, one commissioner that I really thought was focusing on that didn't go that way. So it ended up a three-one.
Just want to say, I think this is a good letter, uh, you know, with sunshine, we can't talk about, that's crazy stuff and, but obviously represents...
There's a couple of words you would've changed, but you know...
No, none. Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. So I mean, it clearly represents the sense of this council, what we have previously talked about. Just, um, I, I know, and it's good, there's, I know Chris Corey's going up there today, Larry Curlin is going up there today, other people from Benita. Uh, so, uh, let's hope that, you know, there's still a shot at the two-two. You know, we, we thought it was gonna go one way and another way, and it ended up three-one. Maybe it will be two-two.
Yeah, no, thank you. And I, the quick update that I did gather, there's, there's been no votes yet and there has not been addressed yet. So, which is still rolling through their meeting and it's down, 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 down on the agenda, so. I, I have them all, so. And I'll reveal my sources for anybody who wants to know, but that's okay. Yeah, thank you. Uh, council, anything else on this? Arlene or anybody? Derek, anything to add? Okay. Thank you so much, council, for this and thank you for your support on that. We are, Derek, you tell me. Where are we, buddy? What are we doing? We're first reading time, I think.
First reading of zoning ordinance, a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request by Osprey Capital Management, One LLC, to rezone approximately four plus or minus acres from AG two, uh, AG two Agricultural Zoning District to Residential Plan Development, RPD, for a ninety-two bed assisted living facility located at three-nine-seven-one Via Delray, Benita Springs, Florida, three-four-one-three-four, providing for an effective date.
This is first reading. Just move it on. So moved. Second?
There's been a motion and a second?
Um, I just had one question. Um, under staff recommendations, it said move the item to July fifteenth, city council meeting, but that's the zoning meeting. Should it be the council meeting on the seventeenth or is it the zoning meeting on the fifteenth?
It's a zoning meeting. It's a zoning ordinance.
So it, it will, okay. It, it just said city council meeting, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, when is the meeting, Derek? The zoning?
July fifteenth.
Oh, the fifteenth?
No, or the twenty-fifth.
Are we sure? And I'm sorry to...
I'm not sure. You here?
It says something.
It is the zoning, it is the fifteenth.
It is the fifteenth.
Not here, so be it, I guess.
Zoning meetings on the fifteenth?
Uh, zon- our zoning meeting.
Your zoning meeting, yes.
Apologize, because I didn't have it. On the fifteenth at nine AM, is what you're telling me?
Correct.
Okay.
But this ordinance is coming back to...
Right.
That. Either that or to us.
It's gonna go to, it's gonna go to zoning board and then it's gonna go to city council on your zoning board, on your zoning agenda on the fifteenth. This is, this, and the ordering of this one came up because you're, because of meeting changes for both the zoning board and the council. To keep them on schedule, um, let's take it a little out of order.
Gotcha.
Has it gone before the zoning committee?
It has not.
Okay. So don't we need to wait to hear what the committee has to say?
That's why we're not, we're not making a, we don't have a final ordinance. We don't have a final recommendation on the approval until it gets to zoning board. But the zoning board's taking some time off. And if we wait, this would push it back a couple more months for, for these, this applicant.
You, yes, you will have the recommendation from the zoning board prior to your second reading.
Okay.
I won't be here on the fifteenth. I just want to make a comment about these meetings of the, our zoning board. It's kinda like, somehow it's gotta get better and grain because they, all of a sudden they get moved, they get delayed. And you, I think, I, I see it in Laura's kind of face. It's kinda like, we have plans and calendars and it's kinda like, well, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be here, but then there's no meeting. Um, so anything that can be done about that?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I would just pile on to that, um, with, with the zoning board. And this isn't to try to take control of their schedule, but as we see, there's a lot going on in this city and everybody, right, likes to get away for the summer months a little bit with family. So that's not at all what I'm trying to say. But I think we really, really need to rein in the meeting schedule with zoning and our zoning meetings because I know sometimes it's difficult for even us to be here if things keep getting bounced around. And I know that's difficult. I, I completely get that. So, thank you for what you're doing, yeah, and trying to keep it.
And this is just an odd time. So I will personally apologize to a lot of applications that just happened.
But we don't wanna hold up people either for months based on summer schedule. Right, yeah.
Exactly. Also, if I might, um, our meetings are getting a lot more succinct. And it may be possible that we can, as it used to be the case, to actually add the zoning to our meetings, which are regularly scheduled meetings.
Peter, I love the idea. I really do. And I don't know what staff thinks of it. I'm putting you on the spot.
Arlene?
All right.
Actually, that...
Yeah, we, what we could do is we could do it a time cert and say, if we've been getting out before noon, we could say that, well, reconvene the zoning portion, if there is a zoning portion, at say one o'clock.
Do we possibly do that with this one or is it two?
I might avoid that for maybe the next meeting or two because there's gonna be three to six items on each of those coming forward. So they're gonna be, they're gonna be heavy agendas.
And I've already received scores of compl- you know, complaints.
Well, once we've worked through this particular bulge in scheduling, I think maybe we can start looking at scheduling at the same time as your regular meetings.
So that's good. It's not just the mayor they pick on when they're unhappy. Okay, I was just checking.
We just take the bullets. We never... As, as long as we're talking about meetings, and I know, and I wanna compliment the staff because generally things are going that... But I don't know if everybody else is reacting to this agenda that we're having here, but I am totally confused with all these addendums. Some of the material wasn't even in our packet and, and I really am getting, uh, having a problem with it. And because we had it, and I think part of the problem is we had our budget meeting yesterday. So I was trying to review all that material and maybe it's because I tried to do this at eleven o'clock last night. Uh, but I really think the addendums, I know why we have addendums because we don't get them on the agenda thing, but we need to get them earlier and in some, put them all out at once so we know at least what's happening. I, I don't even have a suggestion. Try to figure it out, but I don't know if your reaction, but my reaction is that I am totally confused here. And, and I'd like to, even if it's the first reading, I wanna be able to review the stuff ahead of time because I have questions about it, you know? I do. And there just hasn't been time to do it on the, on the material that's been brought between us. I know there's time to do it on the second reading, but I think we should do it before we pass it forward, not, you know, at the second reading. So please try to improve upon that.
Okay. Uh, Derek, where are we? I'm sorry. John, are you gonna, you, yeah, right, to that point, where are we?
No, you're just...
I think we have roll calls.
I think you have a roll call.
Are we, okay, so we're to ma- pass it to second reading. We've had a motion and a second. Yeah, and council, is there any discussion on anything else?
No, it's a second, passing it out.
Yep. Okay, roll call.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Yeah, aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrumbah?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, next item is first reading and public hearing on an ordinance providing for, in addition to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter Four, Zoning, creating a new division of supplementary, supplementary district regulations to require certain criteria for golf course redevelopment, planned developments, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion in the code, and an effective date.
So moved. Second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second? Council, is there any...
I have a comment.
This, this one is a public hearing as well because we are changing listed uses within districts.
Sure. Any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Please come forward.
It's still not the final hearing, but it's one of two public hearings.
Okay.
Which one is this?
Golf course.
This is a golf course.
I thought you said earlier that there wouldn't be any...
I was doing that for the zoning ordinance because I understood there were some people here for the zoning ordinance.
Okay, I see Fred and I see Amy. I saw Fred first, I think, and then I see Peter. Okay, thank you. Fred?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna bring forward through staff some amendment to this. And what it basically is, it speaks to one of the things that Ben Hurstson made in his public comment. I think that this would be a place where it would be a mandatory that the developer has to submit to the city using our software that we give them first, a modeling of what happens in different levels of storm up, including an hermesized storm, not only in his development or her development, but to the surrounding properties. And I think that, and it needs to be also analyzed by some independent person because when you do those modeling things, even though it's our software, the assumptions they use is the killer. You can screw around with those and make the water absorb in the ground more than it would and all that. So that one, one, uh, comment, I'll save that to the end for Ben. Something he needs to do back there on, for, that would be helpful.
Great, thank you. Amy and then Peter?
Well, I was gonna mention, you know, uh, once we get a hold of the written material that was presented to you, you know, I'm gonna review it and I'll probably, you know, s- suggest that maybe we should go with this or that. But I have some specific things here and I think I've already given them to you and they're still here, unless I have the wrong thing. But, um, on page three, number D, why is that crossed out is the question? And I don't understand C where it says, "How do you mitigate impacts of proposed land use on schools?" I mean, I, I don't know how you would even do that. Um, on page five, I think there's some typos there. And I, and on page six, we're in number twelve, where there's, they talk about, "Do not undermine the integrity of adjacent single-family residential zoning districts." I think there's a situ- and I think this is critical and I would like to get planning or whoever does these kinds of things to look at this. Sometimes it's not just resident, you know, it's not single-family residential that golf courses can be. You could have multi-family. It's not even a district. It's just, I would say it's uses or something. It should be residential uses. But for those of you that do these kinds of things, you know, please react to that. But what if, what if it's not a single family around a golf course?
Well, what we've looked at is making sure that whatever's proposed is consistent and compatible with whatever that adjacent land use is. So that was one of the requirements with, for the review of the, any application.
Yeah, but this is under deviation. So, I mean, I, I think there's some things that need to be addressed here. And I suggest we work on it. Uh, but I will provide them again and when we get the other responses, that we'll, we'll work on it. And I think some of the other, uh, the ones that we just passed on to the second reading are the same kind of similar questions that I have that I think we need to look at in, in, in a more detailed way.
Thank you, Amy. Peter?
I'd like to make a suggestion, uh, that the points that were made, and I, I'm sorry, I missed your name by the, by the woman from Benita Fairways, the points that Ben made and points that Dwight made, that, um, John's department prepare a memo outlining those points for our next meeting and what their response is, just for efficiency here. Yeah, yeah. Um, I, I, so similar point to you just talking about, Peter. I thought we were just gonna get a presentation today and not dive into this and it was gonna be at the next meeting. So is that not right?
No, I understood that John was doing a brief overlay presentation.
All right.
That gives you the opportunity for more detail.
Think about it and come back.
Think about it and come back to the second reading. Also, at the end of John's presentation, he's suggesting if there needs more time for more public involvement in the process, you can continue that second reading as well. That's part of John's presentation.
I got like a bunch of stuff, but I wasn't thinking today is the day.
Correct. Today was the brief introduction and John has the overview of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mike?
Well, I, I know it's supposed to just be going to the next reading, um, but, but there were a couple of things that I thought, you know, might need to be looked at ahead of time. Um, like on page three, um, a statement summarizing how the applicant's proposal will mitigate impacts on, uh, schools, traffics, parks and emergency services. Wouldn't that like get them out of paying impact fees? Because if they're showing how they're mitigating any impacts to those things, then...
No. That, that's, impact fees are meant to increase capacity. An impact does not necessarily have to be addressed through the increase of capacity. It could be through design or through different access or different, uh, U corridors. There's a number of ways that mitigation can be handled.
So they, they would still pay impact fees?
Correct. The only time that you start talking about impact fee credits is when they start talking about non-site related off-site improvements. And that's an area that, that would be the case regardless of whether this condition was here or not.
Okay, well, 'cause I was just, the, the way, you, you pay an impact fee because you're impacting services there, but if you're showing that you're mitigating those impacts, then what would you pay an impact fee on?
Correct.
That was just my question there. I don't know if it's a legal argument for getting out of it or not, but, um, on page four, uh, project access, it says, um, it's supposed to be no gates, but then it says, "Except for the entrance exit of the proposed redevelopment." So does that mean there still is a gate inside?
The intent was to try to get away from more or from additional gates, but under certain circumstances, if, if they wanted to apply for one, then the council could approve it. If this is something you just want us to eliminate entirely where it's not considered, that can be done right now.
Well, it, it sounded like there, you know, the intent was to not have any gates or walls inside and, but, but then it says you can have a gate there, so.
Good point.
That will be removed.
And then, uh, in page five, uh, under nine, it says the paved trail shall be for use by the general public. But like inside Benita Fairways, it's a gated community. So is it the general public of that community or is it inviting public into a gated community to use the amenity?
If a statement isn't made that establishes that intent, there really is gonna be no way for us to enforce that for areas where it can apply. For areas that are entirely within a gated community, obviously that could be a deviation that was requested because it doesn't make sense. But unless we make the statement, there is not really the ability to enforce that later on.
Yeah, Peter.
On the water issue, I've had some long talks with Yurik about that, and he's given me legal advice with respect to how that would be handled, citywide, et cetera. And I guess I would appreciate if he could call other council people and express his views on that. So we have that as a baseline coming into any discussion of water issues.
And I don't mind saying that we're, in the next couple of hearings, you're going to see a presentation regarding that stormwater modeling program and requirements for submittal of that model.
Citywide.
Yes, sir.
John, do you want to start into this or counsel, are there other thoughts we want to go through?
I put a few slides together, it's real quick, but it's up to you.
No, and here again, Derek, I, maybe it's not pointed at Derek, but Amy was going over some things where there were some typos and some, some mistakes.
Yeah, and I apologize. No, those, those, my issues, I, I got her comments. I thought I'd pass those on to staff along with some changes that were apparently made in temporary use code.
Right.
But this draft, I, I didn't have a whole control, so I didn't make those changes myself, but I have the changes. I'll, I'll get with John and, and make sure we get those through.
Well, we know how I enjoy slash despise typos. So if there are typos, will we have to get those, will we work through the typos today to move on to second reading or?
We'll get the typos taken care of.
We'll get the typos taken care of?
All right, we have a typo clause in the ordinance.
But I didn't want to, okay, lose fact or that or have this get in the way of first reading, but thank you.
All right.
John.
All right, generally speaking, these are the comments that we received. Now, I say generally speaking because there were hundreds of people that attended, and each one of them had a unique perspective as to what should or could take place. But if you break down the comments, even within the, the specific topics that we had, these tended to be where they would fall. They didn't want, first of all, most of them were, were hoping that the golf courses that were beside them remained golf courses. But if that wasn't the case, this is what we were beginning to look at. And they wanted to make sure everything was compatible. They definitely didn't want any stormwater issues, but not just on a macro level, but on a micro level. They didn't want berms beside their property all of a sudden causing ponding, ponding in their backyard where they didn't used to see ponding. They wanted new development integrated with the existing development. And, and at least the sections I was leading, that meant they wanted the internal street layout and the design to look as if it was part of the original project. They didn't want one project to look separate and distinct from what was already there. And they were looking for, for not just the external impacts of traffic to be addressed, but also the internal impacts. Because a lot of what's going to affect their daily lives is going to be within the development. It's not going to be something that you see on adjacent roads, although that would obviously be something we would study. But it was going to be, now you have a new intersection with a stop sign and you have a, however many new residents that are going to be going through that intersection, how is that going to perform? And then they were looking at, what do you do with those portions of the golf course where somebody is not proposing redevelopment specifically? And one of the areas that we're looking to, to address with that on this slide is that we are looking to include the entire golf course property. You wouldn't be able to just take five acres, 10 acres, 20 acres out of the entire golf course and look to rezone that property to leave the rest of it fallow essentially. We want to know what the plan is, what the intentions are for the rest of it. And just as a side note, I have heard several comments about open space, including parking lots and roadways, and that is not the case. Our open space can include brick pavers, but it does not include pavement. So if someone has a patio or lanai or, or a community area or a walkway that's brick pavers, that would count as pervious space, but it would not, we would not count roadways or parking lots. We also looked at, from a stormwater perspective, obviously there's going to be modeling involved from, from a larger issue. But for all those micro issues, trying to keep the grades at the existing level for 30 feet from, from the perimeter of that golf course. And the intent is that you wouldn't have a berm right up next to somebody's property. And you would have the ability for a little bit of that, well, what would be historical flow to be maintained. And at that point, that's what we're looking at, providing that a lot of the landscaping and a lot of the berming or anything, if somebody was looking for a specific project. That way, at least it's away from existing properties. We're also looking to evaluate the character of existing development, and I understand there was a comment about the single-family. Obviously, we'll address that. But what I heard was that if redevelopment was going to take place, the neighbors are really looking for something in the neighborhood of single-family next to single-family and multi-family next to multi-family. Obviously, there's going to be exceptions. There's going to be situations where things are not directly adjacent to, and there's going to be some complexity that we can't anticipate today. But that should be the general guideline that we work for. We should also be looking for street patterns like I already discussed, and also include the entire property so that we can maintain minimum levels of open space based upon original approvals. Some golf courses were approved with adjacent residential and adjacent non-residential uses. Some of them were just a golf course. So depending on how it was approved will depend upon how it is rezoned going forward. We tried to address both of those cases where you have adjacent property and where you don't. Regardless, we're looking at maintaining that minimum level of open space. I know that was very brief, but I would be happy to answer any more questions. I would recommend that we move this to the second reading. And if at the second reading, there are still additional questions, comments, or conversations you would like to have, just continue that, that meeting forward until this council is satisfied. And hopefully, we have an ordinance that you're, you're happy to pass.
So moved. Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Counsel, is there any further discussion? And this is typos and all, Derek?
Typos and all.
Typos and all. Been a motion in a second. Typos and all.
I think he said there's supposed to be public comment here now?
And then public.
Public hearing, and we, we did, you did open it up to public hearing.
Okay.
And just to be careful, just again, if there is anybody from the public that would like to speak, please come forward. Thank you, sir. I see.
Thanks. Thanks again, Mayor, council people. My name's Dwight Essman. I live across Paradise Road from the golf course, and I've lived in Benita for over 25 years. My house is not on the golf course, and I'm probably five feet above the road level. But I'm concerned about potential flooding in the neighborhood, traffic congestion, construction noise too, if this ordinance does not pass. It's not perfect. I've talked to John, but I think his team has done a good job of trying to make it fit in all the golf courses around town. But we are asking for some minor changes, and we will get those to you probably later today. I personally wish the ordinance was more restrictive. I have an acre lot, single-family home. I can't build another five homes on my lot. I wish that it would be zoned, one home per acre. I wish that 70% of the land would be left open. But I understand that is too restrictive for all the other golf courses in the area. So I hope you do accept the minor revisions, push this forward. And I have one question that I hope I can ask John. If we move, if we move the boundaries, the buffer to 50 feet, and you have a 200-foot wide easement, are boundaries, does the buffer go on both sides of the fairway?
And what I'll do, sir, is I'll let you and John continue that after you speak.
Okay.
But thank you, and any other comments you might have at, at the time? John will definitely speak with you about that.
Thank you.
Personally. Thank you, sir. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Morning, Ben.
Yes, good morning again, Ben Hursonson. Just one comment or question, I guess. When I hear that pavers are pervious, well, yeah, sure, they're pervious depending upon what the base is. If it's sand, of course, it's going to be pervious. And if it's cement or hard-packed, you know, and my, my, we just had the front entrance of our community redone because some of the royal palms are lifting up the pavers. They were pulled up. I'll tell you something, that substrate, whatever they, they're on, yes, they were set in sand, you know, when they were reset. But the cert, the actual underlying is hard as cement, and that is basically compacted coral or limestone, whatever it might be. Hot as a rock. And if someone's going to tell me that's pervious, I'm going to say, sorry, I can show you the sheeting that takes place during a regular, you know, thunderstorm or, or shower, heavy shower. So I think the general statement that all paved, paved areas are pervious is just not correct.
Great. Thank you, Ben. Other members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none? Derek.
I already.
Okay, and we've had a motion in a second? Any further discussion, counsel? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crumbah.
Aye.
Councilman Duit.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Okay, and next item is first reading introduction and public hearing on an ordinance providing for, in addition to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter Three Development Standards, creating a new section under Article Five, Section Two, the Benita Beach Road Design Standards, Chapter Four, zoning, Article Five, Division Ten, creating a new division of supplementary district regulations establishing criteria for development and redevelopment along the Benita Beach Road Corridor, amending Chapter Four, zoning, Article Five, Divisions Five, Six, Seven, and Eight, use tables, amending Chapter Four, zoning, Article Three, Division One, planned development, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved. Second.
There's been a motion in a second?
This is again a public hearing.
Yes. Counsel, any comments or thoughts? And then members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none? Okay, John?
This item was discussed at the LPA at their last meeting, and we went through page by page. And so there are a couple of things that you have in one of your addenda memos that addresses those changes that we know need to be made prior to your, your second reading. And if there are any other concerns, I'd be happy to, to go through those. This is a little bit more of a substantial ordinance, a few more pages involved. So I don't know if page by page is really the best option for this right now.
John, what we discussed, this was an introduction today to the council. The more intense page by page can be at second reading. And additionally, if at that point council's not comfortable, they can extend that second reading as well.
Counsel, Amy.
I just want to say that, I mean, I did try to go through this, and I think I finally got sort of the gist of how this is written. But I think we should meet personally to go over it because it is complicated, and, and I have some questions. So there's no point in doing it now because we have it for the second reading, right? But I'll set up an appointment with you.
I'd be happy to. And if anybody else would like to do the same thing, I'm, I'd be happy to go through with you individually.
Okay.
You have a motion and a second.
And a second? Is there any further discussion? Anybody?
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crumbah.
Aye.
Councilman Duit.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Okay, Derek, anything else?
No, the next item you have is a second reading and public hearing on an ordinance repealing and replacing the Benita Springs Code Sections four dash two, one, two, four through four dash two, one, three, two, temporary uses, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, and scrivener's errors, modifications that may arise from consideration of public hearing, and ineffective date.
So moved. Second.
Now, this is a public hearing too, so if there's any additional comment.
Sure. There's been a motion in a second. Is there any comments from the public? Public comment?
This is second reading. This is the final. Correct, unless there's changes you'd like to make.
Morning, Don.
Hello. I just want to reiterate what the city charter requires under Section 29A. "Any ordinance which repeals or amends an existing ordinance or part of the city code shall set out in full that ordinance, section or subsection to be repealed and amended, and shall indicate matters to be omitted by enclosing in brackets or by strikeout type, and shall indicate new matters by underscoring or by italics." They don't say you'll take the existing, cross it all out, and then you'll take the new and show it to everybody and underline it. It says you take the existing, on that existing, you cross out what you're deleting, and you underline, or underline or put in brackets what you're adding. And that wasn't done on this. And it's a problem because the charter is your bible. And if your legal staff and your community development doesn't know that, that they need to do that, there's a problem.
Can we chat about that?
Thank you, Don. Thank you very much. Yes, Peter.
Can we chat about that? I mean, if she's correct, I think I'd like to amend my motion to have you go back and do it in accordance with that and bring it back at the next meeting.
Well, what me, me and Ms. Kanikowski have a disagreement on is I believe that I've met the charter requirements. We have, I believe, we are revising one code section and deleting eight in their entirety. And had this been a situation where we were going line by line in that remaining code section and been changing words, but we are repealing and replacing them all, we're not really amending the code because we're bringing entirely new code in, it would have been sort of confusing to, to start section four dash, and then dump a bunch of stuff in.
Why not do that too?
We can do that as well.
Because I'm assuming from what she's saying, there are, and what you're saying, that there are parts that are in the new that were in the old. It's not like everything is gone.
There are some portions that are in. They have been, they have been carried over, but they are now subsections of a new section.
So I, I think, no harm, no foul, why not do what she's suggesting?
We can do that. Would you like, would you like me to do that and bring it back at a, at a future meeting instead?
Yeah, I, I would amend my motion to do that.
Now, there, there were two other items that Ms. Kanikowski raised in her emails. One, I was unable to follow with regarding zoning districts and whether commercial versus residential. You may want to ask her to come up and explain. The previous code made no distinction between temporary uses and commercial residential districts. This code explicitly lays it out, but either way, your, your comprehensive plan requires that commercial uses cannot be in residential districts. So the regulation is effectively the same. The other point that she did make, which I think was, had some validity, is we had in the prior code that the times of usages for temporary uses were, be listed in the permit. That language is carried over. However, in the prior code, we only put time limitations on one subset of uses, which was carnivals. We had no standards for any other type of use. And so we can't, having a generic free-for-all on, on that, we needed some discretion, so we put in some standards for, that would apply across the board. So if you want to look at times of use, that's something else that you could look at, but it would be a policy direction from you.
And Derek, you said you had some questions on something, and Ms. Kanikowski.
Just the, she, she, you raised questions about commercial uses being vested in residential districts?
The C1. In, there's several residential districts where under the zoning, it's, it's C1 zoning, which grandfathered uses that were existing as, as of 19, August 1986. Okay, but they are in residential districts. The problem is that if you're saying that temporary uses won't be allowed in residential districts, the, these are residential areas that are zoned C1 only to grandfather commercial uses that were there prior to Lee County adopting its first comprehensive plan. So then you have a problem there because if someone comes in and wants a, a temporary permit, and it's in a C1 zone, it's really a residential area now. It may have one or two business uses there that were there before 1986 and grandfathered. But if you just look at the zoning, you would say, well, they can have that temporary use there in that residential neighborhood. That's my concern.
And I want to follow up on that. Also, it's a similar thing. Again, I'm sorry, when I review this, it was from the one we had seen at the last meeting, and I only have the new material that I got today. But there are instances where, like for example, in an agricultural zone, you have residential areas. All right? So the way this is written, you could have a commercial temporary use, I, I think. Even though, because in agricultural, you can have a commercial use.
Right.
So I, I think it's speaking to the same point, but from a different point of view. So I think we need to clarify that.
Well, I might ask John to come up briefly and explain how that was done under the prior ordinance, because the prior ordinance didn't make a distinction along the lines.
You didn't change that part of it? You just?
Well, no, we, it didn't have any, it didn't address that at all. But in theory, you wouldn't be allowed to issue a commercial in a non-commercial district.
Just so, from my own mind, we don't lose the thread of what Dawn was talking about. I, I think I followed it, right? She's saying that there are residential areas where there's commercial zoning only for purposes of grandfathering certain uses. And now, because the temporary use is allowed in a commercial area, you can put a temporary commercial use in that residential area. And that, if she's correct, I follow the logic of what she's saying. I think that's something you got to go back and think about. You don't want to open the door to temporary commercial uses in residential areas that have commercial zoning just for grandfathering purposes.
If your, if your Z, if your C1 zoning district explicitly restricts those uses to those grandfather uses, then that would still apply without any changes to the ordinance.
Oh, well, maybe double check that.
Well, if you look at, if you look at the section on, on A three, page six, "Temporary use permits shall only be issued within zoning districts for which the use is allowed by right or for those which have been permitted by special exception," which is still an area of concern. But for example, temporary use permits for commercial sales or services shall not be issued in residential districts. Shall Not Be Issued In Residential Districts." Doesn't say residential zoning districts, this is residential districts. So I would agree that...
Can we just leave it as you'll check it?
I think maybe an annotation would be appropriate.
Just leave it and check it rather than...
Check into that, Derek?
Yeah. Rather than have us drafting stuff today?
Well, you've already agreed to push it on, so we'll make those...
Okay, and the second point was she had?
Yeah, I was going to say you had two parts there.
The other part was regarding, and I don't know if she was expanded or restricted, but the actual hours of operation. We have hours of operation currently proposed that are generic across all uses. And then there was in the prior code, it only had it for carnivals and fairs. So there was no, basically, there was no authority for staff to restrict it, anything, any other timeframes. It was basically whatever someone asked for.
I will hear from her.
Yes, sure, Don, I'd like to, if you...
My concern was that, and it tied in with the C1 zoning and everything, that it was just cut and dried. No matter what it is, what neighborhood it's in, what it entails, they can go till 11 o'clock at night on Friday or Saturday night. I mean, it shouldn't be one size fits all. It depends on what that activity is, you know, what it entails, what noises it makes, what, you know... I mean, it shouldn't be one size fits all that, you know, anything you want Friday and Saturday night, you can be there till 11 o'clock. And Monday through Friday, you can be there till nine. I mean, it, you know, just, that was my concern.
Well, what I...
Normally, I think the way it's, I'm sorry. Normally, the way it is now is it depends, it just went with the permit. They, the council reviewed what it was, or community development reviewed what it was and said, okay, these are good hours for that, you know? And worked with the people in the neighborhood then, so.
And you heard that, Derek?
I think we're partially conflating special event permits with the temporary use. But what we'll do is we'll put some standards for discretion at the staff level because this is a staff-issued permit.
Yeah.
Right.
We didn't have any discretion previously. Now, we will have, we'll put some standards that are not arbitrary in there, but we needed to establish some. And this is not affecting special events.
Yeah, to clarify, the special event permit is the one that comes before counsel on you? Is which correct depending on the nature of the event, the music? If it's a concert, they can...
But it's in the nature of something special, it's just temporary, so.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah, but it's a temporary sales perm, I mean, what this is, is for temporary sales in a tent.
Like Christmas trees.
Yeah, Christmas trees.
Started with fireworks.
I know.
Brad, I know you had a question.
Yeah, is there anything that would allow the people that are around there to be notified that we're about to issue a temporary use permit? Like maybe houses within so many feet so that if they had a issue, they could at least contact somebody in the city before permit was issued or...
So you don't post it to the palm tree that's, what, 50 feet and 75 in every direction?
We could provide for mailings, but these would be, these permits would probably be issued pretty quickly on a turnaround basis, so.
Yeah.
I don't know how, if that's, it's a policy directive. Would you like us to get mailings out to somebody within...
Could we at least put it on someplace prominent on the community development website? So they could keep an eye on it, people like Don?
Well, the applications are always on the website. But I, I mean, if you want them to be under a specific location, that's fine.
Yeah, I think if it's, if it's close to residential or other types of uses, that there ought to be, they ought to know in advance it's going to happen. So if they have a thought, they could at least give it to you.
And we might want to share that potentially in some upcoming newsletter once we've gone through this. I know that's not going to reach everybody, but it is going to reach 50,000 or more of our closest friends to let them know. Yes, Mike?
Yeah, I had a few comments on this. I know it was mentioned that it only applies to things being sold from a tent. But in here on page seven, it says that temporary uses examples of are events such as fairs, carnival, circuses. So would this apply to like a school fair?
Define a school fair? I mean, a school fair, that's a very...
They do like an event where, you know, they'll have bounce houses.
Let me clarify, let's say you had a school fair occurring at a school. And that school fair was, I'm assuming, after hours. And even if it took up a significant amount of the parking for the school, there would still be adequate parking facilities to allow them, allow people to park and things like that. There would be no issues incurred under this ordinance. At the same time, other than the carnivals and issues, you didn't have anything in your code to really restrict, say, somebody coming in and going into the Home Depot parking lot, not that Home Depot allows this, and having a used auto fair where they fill up the entire parking lot with used vehicles. You know, that's what this code is really addressing. It's really trying to address use of property on a continued basis that's not a permit. If you had a fairgrounds, for instance, and got that permitted as a fairgrounds, this would not, this code would not apply at all.
Derek, let me ask you. Because I've got Greg in the back of my mind on this when he was up in the Panhandle, you know, addressing the hurricane. Is this in times of emergency? In other words, I think back to our hurricane and when, I completely understand all this, but then, of course, then at time of emergency or health, safety, welfare, benefit of the community, however you'd like to phrase that, how does that apply, Derek?
We have provisions, starting on page 12 of the ordinance, that lay out emergency facilities that are being operated. Now, that is one thing that's different from a lot of communities. You have those provisions, we carried a lot of those over. So we have provisions that, that's not the same issue as reconstruction. We allow mobile homes, for instance, during reconstruction of a home, things like that. That's all allowed by this ordinance.
Arlene?
Councilman Gibson, just to clarify to you with the school, if it did require that you were using one of those tents that we've had in the past that are larger than the 10 by 10, it requires the fire department permit. That is, the way that is issued is through the temporary use permit, through the tents for the event. Depending on this, they look at the setup and the traffic circulation. If it's larger than what's required, and that's not, and you also get the fire permit at the same time.
But if it's 10 by 10, then, or less, they're fine. Also, on page 12, I brought it up last time, but B two, it says nine months or 27 days. I think it should be 270 days.
Typo?
Very good catch.
Scrivener error.
Scrivener error. Right. Bibby, did you catch anything else?
No, I'm good.
Brad, did you catch any typos? No?
And just real quickly, you have, we also have 11:30 time certain executive session that we're going to move in forward, so.
Okay.
So we will bring this back to you. There's no need to take any action today. We'll bring this back to you at another meeting. And if there's any additional comments, typos, please send them to me.
We'll harass you.
No, 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 look.
I take ownership.
We're making light of it, but at the end of the day, it has to be perfect.
It's got to be right.
Yeah, it's got to be right. Thank you.
And thank you, Don.
Yes, and thank you, Don, for your tireless work. Thank you very much. Okay, Derek, you're good, I think?
Good.
Okay, yeah, Peter?
I might because I'm going to turn into a pumpkin after the 11:30 thing, go out of turn on something, just to kind of quasi reports or get the view of counsel on. One is on Lover's Key State Park. So Arlene and I have met with Eric Draper and Mark Generalis has done it, I guess you all know, done a great job on this. Also met with John Jenkins the other day. So there are two different issues here, but they really relate to each other. Obviously, we're really trying to get, obviously, people know, we're trying to get beach access at a reasonable price for the people of Benita Springs. And there's a whole history to that. But one of the possibilities is Lover's Key State Park. And we've talked about that before. And so the second element of this that's related is with the new system out there, the new structure out there. You know, they get a million visitors a year. And believe it or not, they're on septic. Talk about septic. So BSU has really been, I think, pretty gracious in going out of its way here because the connections on Lover's Key are out of Fort Myers, it's just the Lee County system. It's not the BSU system. But BSU has offered to go in there and put a system in. Obviously, over time, be paid for it, it's like, but it's a substantial expense. They've asked us, happened to be talking to me, all right, us, if we would make a contribution there, basically relating to the famous ANC fees. Remember, those are the bamboo village things that we have, that we've talked about from time to time in other contexts. So Mark and Arlene and I yesterday had a phone call after this, our meeting yesterday morning. And without belaboring it here, I just wanted to explain this as a background. And if Arlene can brief individual members of counsel on this, I think that would be helpful. So I know she's going to be away tomorrow, so we might wait until she gets back. And then we can talk about it at a later date. But there's a possibility for a big win-win here for the people of Benita Springs, for the septic system concept, working together with BSU, in my view.
Any chance that we can get money from Lee County also?
Well, that's, thank you, not thank you, it's interesting. So you ought to talk to Arlene about that, all right? And just talk to Arlene about that. So, being cryptic again. The second is that Steve Lohan, I was on the phone with Steve Lohan yesterday, who as you know is the chair of the Fire Board. And he mentioned, and obviously Greg is more familiar with this than anybody here, that they have the beautiful 9/11 Memorial Park that they've created. And if you recollect back, you know, it goes back to, that started the concept of the mural there with our Art and Public Places Board. And when I was a liaison, I actually asked if Benita Fire would pay for that instead of us. And they were gracious, they stepped up and they paid for the whole thing. Which, I mean, talk about partnership, right? So we have, they have delivered the 9/11 artifact, which is sitting in front of Lyle's Hotel. And very sad, I forget his name, Greg, who brought it down from New York, who died, what was his name? Yeah, worked with you guys and, yeah. But he, Paul Phillips, who passed away tragically two days, two weeks after he retired from Benita Fire. He brought that down, I'm assuming with some of the other guys from New York. And it was really a Benita Fire initiative. So that's the background. And Steve asked if before 9/11 ceremonies this year, it would be possible to have that artifact moved to their 9/11 park. So I wanted to alert you to that. I can put it on a green sheet for the next meeting. But to me, it makes all the sense in the world. I don't know what counsel's view is of that, if we could have a sense of that. Or if you want to wait, Peter, I don't want to, you know? So that's, anybody's view on that would be appreciated.
Sounds great.
All right. So we had a consensus on that, but I still think it's appropriate to put it on a green sheet for the next meeting rather than just have stuff come up and, you know? But we can convey to Steve that as of now, the consensus is that it would be fine. If that's all right with everybody? So thank you for allowing me to go out of order.
Sure, no, absolutely. And we are now city managers' items. Or Derek?
You have one more item under my items and...
I thought I gave you last call.
Oh, I thought that was on the ordinance.
All right.
I apologize. We have to get on the same page, the two of us. We do have an 11:30, but we advertise it as soon thereafter. I think it may, if we can possibly get through this last agenda item, it may be beneficial since we have the whole council and the court reporter still needs to set up anyway. And that is addendum item number one under city attorney's items. And John will present. This is regarding Horizon Park Investments. If you recall, this was an approval that was good right before the Benita Beach road visioning process went forward. And in the moratorium, you called this project out specifically as one that's exemplifying those regulations. But because we have land development regulations coming forward, some changes, they were originally going to submit hopefully before the moratorium ended under the relief process, so we get that direction. We don't have that direction, and yet we still don't have the land development regulations in place. So we are taking something, which would otherwise be administratively to you for some guidance because those development regulations are coming down the way and you may wish to change them. With that, I'll leave it up to John.
Very briefly, this was an approval that showed lot layouts but did not show potential building locations. You, Derek said, you had discussions compared to the Benita Beach Road Visioning. On page 12 of 14, you can see the original master concept plan. And on the following page, which I guess would be 15 of 14, you can see the proposed layout. That layout shows a building generally running parallel to the I-75 right-of-way. And it would be for healthcare uses. Like Derek said, this would only be an administrative item. However, because of the nature of our evolving regulations, I just wanted to bring it to you for your understanding and review.
Some more, second.
There's been a motion and a second? Counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please. Amy?
I actually have a question, you know? I think the point here is that we're supposed to...
Microphone, maybe, Amy?
Consistent with the Benita Beach vision.
Yes, ma'am.
And I didn't hear any discussion of whether it is or isn't.
We believe that...
Even though the regulations are not in place, there's a concept here, all right?
What was done on two separate occasions was a review and a discussion of this property as well as other properties on a separate occasion to determine whether that specific vision should apply to both of them. And in both of those cases, it was determined that this road, this project could have a row of parking up in front of the buildings and not have them designed, strictly speaking, consistent with the vision that we would be enforcing along the rest of the corridor. Mainly because of the unique nature of the site, the council had looked at the fact it was right next to the off-ramp for I-75 and it had an irregular shape as to one of the reasons why it should not be strictly enforced. In this particular case, what they have done is generally designed consistent with that guidance that you have provided in the past. However, the information that you had in the past was much more general in nature. It did not provide specific building layouts or uses that would be proposed for these three lots. And if counsel agrees that this is consistent, which we staff believes that it is, it's consistent with the vision that you have given, we will process the administrative application that is included as backup for this green sheet. And we will work on the development order application for this proposed building location and use. So based upon the guidance you have provided in the past, we do believe it is consistent with that. However, because this provides a lot more detail and specifics than we ever had before, we wanted you to have a chance to look at this and also say that you thought it was consistent.
And all you're doing is getting rid of some lot lines, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Because I do recall, I remember we voted on this and the point that you just brought up. So other than the fact that the, you can look at it one way, that the parking is not totally consistent with the Benita Beach Road vision, we felt that because of the location and existing development around there, that we could allow for this small change and still say it's consistent. And now they bring us virtually just a combination of lot sizes in a much larger building, but it still has the parking, it actually has probably more parking than we had looked at before when the individual lots, is that true or not true?
It's generally consistent with what you had always discussed. But that was always from, like I said, it was always a general discussion. But now we're looking at one, one drive aisle, a two-way drive aisle, and parking on the south side of the drive aisle that's closest to Benita Beach Road. As that drive aisle works its way southwest, there is parking on both sides. But both sides does not exist adjacent to Benita Beach Road. It only exists adjacent to I-75.
Okay, all right, then I'm good with it, I think.
Okay. Been a motion and a second? Counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Duitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'...
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McRumba?
Aye.
Okay, Arlene or Derek, do we want to set up now, or do we want to...
I think perhaps maybe you want to take a brief bat. Well, I don't know how much time each of the council members are public comment. We may want to just take a small break to set up here before we reconvene into executive session